2024 here in Bedford, Oregon is now called to order. Um, our first speaker is going to be Alan Hansen from the Marine Board. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair Jackson. My name is Alan Hansen, policy and environmental manager for Marine Board. First, I'd like to thank everybody attending this work group session of the Oregon State Marine Board. Specifically, I'd like to thank members of the Marine Board themselves for recognizing the importance of this conflict and their willingness to meet with all the community interested parties to understand the significance of the Upper Rogue and local community on the economy.
Speak a little louder.
Sure. Thank you. I'd also like to thank the Oregon Kitchen Table Project, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Rogue River Guardians, Rogue Jet Adventures, the city of Shady Cove, and Jackson County for agreeing to present to the board and to hopefully offer reasonable compromises to help board facilitate a solution for all the internal parties. Finally, I'd like to thank our law enforcement partners that have worked so hard on the river and will be responsible for enforcing rules that result from this process. So all boating activities in Oregon are subject to the Oregon State Marine Board's statewide rules that relate to boat or safety and operational standards. But there's no local rules or special rules that are applicable to this section of the Upper Rogue River. The Marine Board has received a rule petition from the Rogue River Guardians to create a local rule that would place a 15 horsepower restriction on boats operating above Table Rock Bridge. In response to the petition, the board voted to open rulemaking process for this section of the Upper Rogue. And for this purpose, the Upper Rogue is defined as a section of river between Lost Creek Dam and the former Bold Ray Dam site, which is approximately 30 river miles. Uh, the purpose of this group, this work group, is to seek public input into the system Marine Board developing draft rules. As a reminder, this is a work group, an opportunity to listen and hear from the community. The board will not be making any decisions or proposing any rules at this time. While the petition requests specific rules, the board can make the determination that no rules are necessary. They can adopt the rules as requested, or they can develop the set of rules that they determine are appropriate for the circumstances. The board will meet next on October 23. At that time, we will not receive, excuse me, at that time, they will have reviewed all the information received to date and will vote on draft rules or to stop rulemaking process. The Upper Rogue, the board will not take public comment on this topic at that meeting. There will be an opportunity for additional public comment on those draft rules before they are finalized. And that's assuming that the board does vote for a set of rules. So to provide a brief history, how we got to this point. Uh, the Rogue River has a long history of being a multi-use river shared between swimmers, fishermen, rafters, and boaters. In 1977, Lost Creek Dam was completed to mitigate flood risk in the Rogue Valley. This allowed more construction along the riverbanks. In 2011, Rogue Jet Adventures began a commercial jet boat tour operation in the approximate nine river miles between the former Bold Ray Dam site and Rattlesnake Rapids. In 2015, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department entered into a one-year revenue share, revenue sharing agreement with Rogue Jet Adventures to operate out of Tubel State Park. This agreement was not renewed due to public concerns. In 2017, Oregon State Marine Board received a rule petition from Rogue Flyfishers to place a similar motor restriction above Table Rock Bridge. The Marine Board denied that petition. In 2022, Oregon Parks and Recreation sought public comment to again enter an agreement with Rogue Jet Adventures. In early 2023, Parks abandoned the concept due to community opposition. In addition to the commercial jet operation, we've heard concerns of mini jet boats operating above Rattlesnake Rapids and in the side channels and tributaries of the road. There are similar concerns related to the safety and impact of fishing habitat. While those two issues are similar, I'd encourage the board to be aware that these are two separate issues and involve different jet boat operations. So based upon these ongoing issues, Oregon Kitchen Tables Project was bought into the, was brought in to have the community conversation on how the community would like to see the Upper Rogue River managed. I'll let O K T describe their process. So I just want to provide a brief synopsis of where we are. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, I'll give it more back to Chair Jackson.
Um.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to clarify the section we're talking about. You said the old Bold Ray Dam site.
Yes.
Where is that?
Uh, approximately five miles, four to five miles downstream from Tubel State Park.
So it's up there in several point?
Sure. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so I do have a question. In terms of talking about area-specific rules, can we carve out exemptions? For example, elimination or a 15 horsepower limitation and then carve out an exemption for law enforcement?
So, I'm sorry, I missed.
So if we were to look, if we looked at the petition, the Rogue River Guardians has put out this as they want to have 15 horsepower limit above a certain point. If we adopt something like that, can we carve out an exemption that law enforcement can continue to use their jet or larger horsepower craft?
So typically, when we do a rule like this, we would provide an exception for law enforcement and search and rescue activity.
Okay.
So yes, that is something you can, you can do.
Any other questions for Alan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Willis from Oregon Kitchen Table Project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Jackson and board members, thank you for having me. Um, then we have some slides, so thanks very much for inviting us to present here. I know you probably all have seen the very long report that really summarizes the input. Let me just give you some of the high-level themes today and give us a chance to have a bit of a conversation. And so, um, whenever you're, I'm sorry, I'm running, I know I'm ahead of you. So whenever you're ready, we can go. Sorry. Now you're good, please. I think that must be the end of the presentation. Thanks. Thank you. There we go. Great. Thanks. Just to introduce, I'm Oregon Kitchen Table. I'm Wendy Willis. I'm the Director of Oregon's Kitchen Table. We're a statewide community engagement program and we do, sometimes we do statewide projects. Sometimes we do, you know, very local or regional projects. And this was kind of a combination of being very place-based, clearly, and yet four state agencies coming together to try to get some input together from the public about this stretch of the road. And we've been around for 12 years. We've done projects in all kinds, in all kinds of topics. Everything from high school graduation requirements to medicine disposal to now to the, now to the Rogue. All of our reports are up on the website, so this report is on our website and the reports from your projects. So just in answer to your question, there's the stretch, there's the stretch of the, of the Rogue that we're talking about. This map was used throughout the engagement process and folks engaged with it were ways both online and in person. Um, so as we mentioned before, you know, there was a, um, there'd been a lot of conversation about this stretch of the Rogue for a number of years, as you all know, and it became, um, I think some of the agencies approached us and said, you know, we, we know we're hearing from people, but we don't know who we're hearing from. We don't know how, you know, how people are really using and relating to this section of the Rogue. So to just kind of step back, take a step back and say, you know, what, where, what are people doing there? What are their values? What would they like to see for the future? Um, in the end, about 2,600 people participated. Um, and this is, you know, an engagement like this is really a snapshot. It's not a scientific study. It's not designed to be a scientific study. It's supposed to be a snapshot of a moment. And, and it comes through, you know, a variety of practices. We know that people come, um, come to this, to this kind of work with a bunch of different knowledge levels. Like, you know, there's specific proposals that are coming from the community right now. And there's other folks who would never engage in a conversation about this at all, even though, you know, they're using picnic tables, they're fishing, swimming. And so there's lots of, there were a lot of people who had participated many times and, you know, very concerned. And a number of people who had never been asked before. So, so one of the things that leaves you with, right, is a big knowledge gap. So, um, you know, one of the things we can't do is, in this kind of a process where you're talking about hundreds of thousands of people, really drill down on specific proposals until people had a chance to really talk about like how they use the river and what they're seeing there. And so this was really a step back from a specific proposal. In addition to the fact that it was multiple agencies who had different jurisdictions, different questions that they're asking. And by doing a kind of broader engagement, it doesn't, it hasn't, gives it a little bit more of a shelf life. So it can actually inform how, let's say, state parks works day-to-day in Tubel. So it doesn't have to inform formal decisions. It also can inform informal decisions. And we heard all kinds of things that were, um, that were not really necessarily related to this question of, of motorized boats, but that were had to do with all kinds of other things that people were saying on the river. And, and you have thousands of comments to sift through, um, to see some of those things. Um, and I think should, you know, can, can help you today down the road. So I think, you know, this is a sort of obvious observation, but one of the things that we really learned in this process is just a lot of pressure on the stretch of river, both emotional pressure and physical pressure. People are very attached to it. I mean, um, they, they love this part of the river. We've heard from many people generational stories of their grandparents' relationship to the river and their hopes for their kids on these sections of the river. And, um, and what they, and that this real desire that they really want what they got to have on that section of river for their descendants and for, for the communities. So we heard, um, you know, that both from newcomers and from folks who've lived here a long time, that this is just a really special place to them and they want to make sure the future generations benefit from it. So it's easy to sort of see the conflict and react to the conflict, but it really comes out of this, you know, real affection for that stretch of river. And then there's other things that of course create pressures. Um, for example, just population curves in this part of the state. And we heard a bunch of people talking about as there are changes in other parts of the other rivers in the region that that'll continue to increase, um, use and pressure on this part of the Rogue. And then in addition to the sort of, you know, um, hopes, dreams, desires and emotional connections, there's just a lot of keeps. Um, you know, people talked about recreation the most, but you'll see all these numbers. It's because most people did between all those things that were listed or at least several of them. And when we're, we're asking about, you know, how do you, I think this is part of the river. Um, many people raised their hands almost every time we made conversation. So lots of people do lots of things on this river, um, including folks who live there, who work on the river. But, um, a lot of, you know, fishing was the thing that was mentioned the most. But in addition to fishing, most people did other things as well. So, so when we talk about, it's sort of like when people talk about bike car conflicts, where sometimes people are bicyclists and sometimes they're a car driver and their, their view on the conflict is different, depending on which vehicle they're in. That definitely showed up here too, where people were on both sides of things where there were sometimes conflicts. And then, and then one thing that was broadly concerning, so there's a lot of talk about how these conflicting uses bump into each other. But nearly everyone in community meetings and, and the vast, vast majority of people on, in the survey talked about the health of the river and fishing wildlife, no matter what their activity was. That that was, that's something that they, they wanted to see protected. They wanted the river to be healthy. Um, now what that means, that's a different thing, right? Like, we, you know, what, um, what people see as health, but there's lots of conflicting information being passed around during our engagement period. Um, and so that's, that's the, you know, the part to drill down on. But there was a real value of a healthy river regardless of its positionality. Yeah. Um, one thing I wanted to mention that I think is really interesting about doing a process like this is a full third of the people who answered the survey didn't even know about there was any conflict though. Like, they'd never seen a conflict. They'd never heard of it. And so that's a, so that sort of gives you a sense of people who are not necessarily engaged in the, um, the day-to-day conversation. But the, um, but they still care enough about this stretch of river to participate one way or the other. We had, um, folks out at community events and they either filled out a survey or talked to someone and did an interview or did we have these cards that, where people could do a shorter little statement on what they value about the river? And lots of people had thoughts. Um, we had a high school conversation where students had never, I don't think any of the students had heard about a conflict, but they were super engaged in like, how do you make this a river that, um, that people use, can use together? So there's a couple of like very high-level values. One of them is safety. And, and I know that's a value of yours too. And you, people mentioned that both in person and online and over and over again. Now, of course, what safety means is different depending on how you look at it, but that's something that folks talked about a lot. And the other thing I would mention is about when we're talking about conflicts between activities. On the surface, it sort of seems like it's about jet boats and not jet boats. But both in the survey and in the cards that people handed in, there was a lot of other stories about conflicts between homeowners and fisherpeople and swimmers and rafters. And so there was a lot of other places where people were bumping into each other in their use of the river that, and when we say conflict, we don't necessarily mean yelling at each other or losing that. Um, really, we mean sort of like people were feeling like their safety was impinged on by somebody else's. And, and, and so it's a much more sort of like multi-dimensional set of conflicting uses. And it sort of appears on the surface of it. Um, so I would just encourage, you know, there's all kinds of, um, uh, stories about that that are, that are in the report that I, you know, I just want to point you to that. And I think there were some, um, you know, folks who were like, oh, that's not my experience, but this conversation's got gone down this one road, so I'm just gonna let that conversation happen. And we'll tell our other story in a different form. So, um, so we'll, we'll, you'll see that. Um, Tubel seems to be a focus of the conflict. And, and, you know, I think we saw that in state parks, um, various activities over the last few years. But people talk about Tubel a lot as a sort, as a place where there's a lot of activities happening. And either they're seeing people bump into each other, um, in their uses, or they, um, or they're seeing these happen. And part of that's access to all those things about Tubel, but just to know that that's a place you can talk about a lot. And then, you know, then there's a whole, then there is a community conflict, kind of interpersonal conflict, where people, um, either have a history of disagreeing over this and then, and, and that history repeated itself in this process. Or folks got into conflicts, you know, as part of the process and, you know, had words for each other. And so I think just to recognize that there's, there's the technical aspect of what one does. And then there's the, how does, you know, how does this community come together around living together no matter what happens? So, and so just to recognize. And then, then a bunch of things, there's, there's a whole list of things that people talked about and fish hatcheries and a bunch of other things that aren't really conflicts, but, um, but these are, these are three that sort of rose to the level we thought we should, we should raise with you all here, although you have it all on the board. One of them is this question about enforcement. Um, how is it going to be enforced? There's varying stories and positions on whether current rules are being regularly enforced. And so folks were sort of like, eh. You know, there's multiple ways of looking at, some people have said things like, well, if the current rules were, how to go in forward, it would be a different situation. Other people said, you know, even if we have new rules, we don't necessarily know how they're going to be enforced. Have some mistrust around that. They're just recognizing that the questions of enforcement are high, high in both minds. And then this thing I mentioned before about, um, conflicting data, um, about the effects of particularly jet boats and mini jets, but other things too. How do rafts affect fishing wildlife? How do people, um, you know, walking around when they're fishing from, from, in, from in river in particular? So there was a lot of people sort of making assert, conflicting assertions about the facts. So, um, so it feels like some transparency around the facts that are underlying any decisions now in the future would be really helpful to give people sort of baseline from which to and respond in rules and to actually continue to live in and around that river in the future. And then another, um, topic that came up that was not sort of high on our radar before we started was concerns about limited river access for folks who were aging and, you know, had a relationship with the river as a younger person. But then are now aging and have to have a different relationship with the river. And because there's fewer, there's just not that much to get in and out. People really mentioned that a lot and people that had either themselves or a family member who were experiencing disability. Those issues were raised, um, pretty frequently, actually. And, and, and some of the, some folks were saying, you know, jet boats are the only way that I can experience this river. Because I can kayak, I, you know, I can't stand up there and fish the way I did before. And other, other people were saying things like, you know, I worry about getting knocked over by a weight because my balance wasn't, wasn't what it once was. But, um, the issue about physical, you know, physical limitations was pretty high in people's minds as they were thinking about both themselves and their grandparents. So all that's to say, um, is that there was definitely conflict about what to do about it. Some people had it much more, you know, sort of, um, concrete, had very concrete proposals, like petition that we were talking about a few minutes ago. Other folks, um, were sort of developing proposals as they go. And other people were like, I don't know what to do, but I do think we should do something. Um, and so I think that the, and we definitely saw in community conversations, people persuading each other. So that it seems like super fixed positions, but once people start to hear the multiple interests, they're like, oh, I didn't think about that part of it. I didn't realize, didn't think about it. There was a really low horsepower limitation. It actually effectively is a bait. So there was, so, so I would, I don't think, um, I think there's just, there's more fluidity in that than, than it appears. Particularly on the surveys, because people aren't talking to anyone. They're just talking to themselves. And so those will look like really fixed opinions, but when you see people in a deliberative environment, they're, they're much more like, oh yeah, maybe we should balance these interests. And, and folks once faced with it will say, you know, we don't think anybody should be able to, any one interest should be able to dominate this, these questions, that every, that really we should listen to all these and try to find some way of living together around this. Um, so, but, you know, that said, you know, in almost every form, a significant majority of folks thought there should be some limitation on some activities. And most of those activities were jet boats or motorized boats in some ways. And yet a third of people, that's a big number, right? A third of people thought that, um, that you could manage the conflict. Um, and by like being really clear about the rules and making sure that new people and folks who are sort of casually use the river understand that those rules better and, and they're more fit. So, um, I think that's, so that's sort of the, the sort of net of mentor. And then, then this is, I, I'm not going to read through this list, um, but there's, there's a whole list of things that people proposed and as a way to deal with some of the conflicts. Um, the biggest one being limitations on, on certain parts of the river. And, you know, of horsepower or activity. And then this mini jet thing came up, started coming up more and more depending on this section of the river. So just knowing that those, those are the high on people's list. Um, but there's a whole, whole list of other things that, um. Um, and then, you know, I think we heard this already this morning, that, um, just to recognize that that there, you know, the sections of the river aren't all the same and the activities aren't all the same. And how people see that the balancing of safety and habitat are the same on each section of the river, even though 31 miles, you know, is and the length of this whole river isn't that long, but there's like definitely sections. And in the report, you'll sort of see that some of the mapping where you can really start to see where people do their activities. So it becomes pretty clear, actually, at least from this group of people at this time, where people are doing their activities and where, so, and then the conflicts, where they bump into each other is pretty much driven by this. And, you know, concentration of activities. So I think that's, I mean, I think that pretty much covers the big themes. And, um, and, you know, of course, there's a whole board that we're having to talk to you about, but any questions or thoughts? Um. Thank you.
Yeah, a few questions.
Yeah.
What happens on the river after they build the Bold Ray Dam site? That the problems just stop there?
You know, I don't know the answer to that because that was, we were sort of like, you, we can't do the entire robe. We're not doing the entire robe. So what's the, what's the, um, you know, what's the, the geographic space that we're talking about? So we really tried to limit it to that section. So I actually don't know.
You know, I can understand why we started Lost Creek Dam. You know, that's essentially where the river starts.
Yeah.
Why we stop it from Gold Ray Dam, I'd like to understand that issue a little more.
Sure. Member with the, we had, so when the agency scoped this project, four of us working together, there's a lot of discussion around where do you stop and where do you start? And, um, one of the things that we've learned in the past, of course, you've been a part of, is if you go too big, the solutions become a little, little different, right? You might have a different stretch of river which have solutions. The other piece that's interesting is, um, when you get down too far below there and you get into federally navigable water, we, the Marine Board, actually don't regulate commercial jet boat operations in that area. So again, the tools available to the board to think about the problems, it was kind of a nice break right there for that. So I don't, I don't think, um, that there's not issues below. I think that it's just these issues, um, tend to be specific to this area, so solutions probably better. So, okay. So that was a decision, just to be clear, by, by the agencies, not by Oregon Kitchen Table.
So we don't know, or do we know if there's issues below this section of the river?
Member with the hazard to guess that there's always use and conflict anywhere. There's water and people. But, um, uh, some of the specific ones in that area, um, that I, I know the most about are, come from a a jet boat operator that we don't regulate.
Okay.
And so.
Uh, no, another question. What is the composition of the users on the river? Are these all locals or are there influx of people coming from outside the area?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. So most of the people that we spoke to here are people who live in this area. But that is not to say that, that, um, that there's not a lot of use by folks who don't live in the area. It's just that it's harder to reach them, right? And so, so we did some efforts both at Tubel and at a, at a few events where there were folks from outside the area. But I would say, and from this snapshot, it's a pretty substantial majority who live in Jackson County. Um, uh, or, or are very frequent visitors to Jackson County. Um, and they live, you know, here or around. But there's certainly lots of storytelling about people, um, from outside the area or people who are brand new to the river, either even if they live in the area, right? Um, who, who are inexperienced. So there was a big, um, a lot of storytelling kind of about experience level also on the river, um, either as fishing or boating or rafting or drinking. And, you know, there was a lot, you know, talk about drunk people.
So there's a lot of history on this section of the river. People have been using it for a long time. Why is it now a problem when it hadn't necessarily been a problem?
Well, people have all kinds of, um, I don't know the answer to that, but we certainly heard people's positive, lots of stories about that. And some folks were like, you know, it's just a, um, the kinds of folks that live in the area are different than used to live here before. Some people say things like, you know, it was always like that this, this kind of multi-use, um, 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 river was always there and it was, it was, there was a kind of, people use the expression, although I resist this expression. There was a gentleman. There was a gentleman's agreement with the river and that was, was sort of enforceable. Other folks were, said, no, no, there's just so much more use now that the conflicts have been boiled over. So, so that's a, that's a disputed question about what made it a situation where, where, where it's kind of, kinds of the other agencies.
Thank you.
Kind of to build onto that question, I think maybe more for Director Warren. First question about what is it now a problem? Is it also changes in technology? For lack of a better word, where twenty years ago, the concept of a mini jet was a concept and a dream, but now we have them and they're really affordable.
Yeah.
And, and changes in some of the other technologies. Is that, could that partly be contributory as to why now?
Sure. Chair Jackson, I think it's reasonable to assume that the nature of boating has changed and grown. Motorized boating, certainly there's things like mini jets that weren't, you know, I think some folks would argue that that concept's been around for a while, but it's grown and changed. I think even in your non-motorized community, right? There's more people getting out there and doing kayaking and rafting and, and the natures of those, right? Or have grown and expanded. And, and so, you know, we, we always like to break things down. I would, I would add outside of the technology. And we always focus so much on urban and rural, and I like to think of it more as a density issue. So when people show up in an area and you have density, then you have conflict usually. And I think, you know, you look around, I know where we stayed last night. I bet you all that wasn't there fifteen years ago, right? You know, there's all this infrastructure. I've got to assume they don't build all that unless people showed up, you know, at one of those, those stores and things open. So I think there's also the nature of the just, there's more people trying to enjoy the river as well.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Wendy?
Wendy, one of my observations in attending three of the four sessions was that there wasn't clarity on the different types of impacts created by the different types of uses and the different stretches of the river.
Yeah.
So when people talked about, for example, banning jet boats, what do they mean?
Yeah.
Commercial jet boats, recreational jet boats, mini jets. I heard a lot of very generalized statements in the recreational uses and generalized statements of these are huge problems on this section of the river. Well, what section?
Yeah.
Do you feel like you were able to tease some of that generalization out?
I would say some of it, like, I mean, it's, you know, you, you, there, there are stretches of the river where it's very clear this is a sensitive stretch and that, and some of it not. And I think some of that is just, some of that is just in a room where you have a hundred people and people's level of specific knowledge is really different one from another. And it's going to get muddy like that. And so, so that's the point at which, you know, the, when you get into specific proposals, you can really talk about those differences. So this is kind of a, in a way, it's not a super fine tool. It never will be because of those, those differences in knowledge. I mean, even in the materials, like as we're reading through all those comments, it's really hard to know. People were using terms very clearly like jet boat, motorized boat, motorboat, like, and, and and it's really, you know, even in a, even in person, it's really hard to stop people. You know, can you define that? Oftentimes they can't. And so I think it's just a sort of like, it's a, in a way, it's to give it a signal to explore this further because this is the place where you're seeing some static. And but there is a, there was just a lot of different ways of talking about that, thinking about that. What people strangely, like oftentimes, really the language used best heavily is there's just a lot of difference in how fluid people are with maps, as you know, and people were amazing in some of these projects. Like they would, they could look at that map or the big blown up ones that we had. And they actually used it really effectively, much more effectively than most projects that we're involved in. But I would say it was less about the stretch of river that was unclear. I felt like that was pretty clear. It was more about what the activity is, how those activities are defined. The solution was.
Yeah, I, some of the concepts that I had heard were people thought we were beginning to allow jet boats on the section of the river when they had historically been allowed. So I think it's up to the board to, to clarify that, tease that out as we continue to have these conversations and not just rely broadly on that. Broadly painted conversations. Last question for you is picking up on member with these question. You said you had a couple thousand folks that participated in this process. Some of these folks were unaware of conflicts. There was in high schools, there was. Do you have any kind of data or any kind of metrics on how many of those people that responded, at least two thousand plus people were river users? Or are they just community members sharing their values of the river that have never used the river?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't give you an absolute number on that, but the vast majority of people had some relationship. Even if it's just like, which, or we, you know, walk our dogs. There, so I would think, you know, it was very few people. They just are imagining that stretch of river and, and had no relationship with it. I mean, there may have been people who have more or less intensity or frequency, but the vast majority, and even these students that, you know, were at an event, high school students, they all know the stretch of river. They've all been there for some, you know, some reason, maybe some of them more protected than others.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming out today. Thanks for having me. And of course, we're always available for, you know, more questions or, or slicing the data.
Great.
Thanks, Wendy.
In listening to some of the questions and comments that came out of this part of the discussion, one thing I would like to see before our October meeting is if we have any of the EBR data for this section or either EBR data or from our PSAs about things that they noticed in, in contacts or reports.
Chair Jackson, members of the board, I, I know that Brian and Alan have already been working on preparing that data.
Fantastic.
And I, I've got a outline and framework of how they're going to present that. I think it's going to be very consumable for the board.
Great.
And they're digging back into some of the old paper files to make sure we can show, I think, ten to fifteen years of data. So it's, and we'll definitely have that ready for the, the board meeting in a few weeks.
Great. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Dan Van Dyke.
Will you be, moving the slides?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming out today.
Well, thank you. I would like to thank you very much for the opportunity to present information today about rogue fish in the upper rogue in particular. My name's Dan Van Dyke. I'm the district fish biologist, Oregon DFW. I did not participate in the Oregon Kitchen Table process. So with me here today is somebody who did, our watershed manager, Phil Simpson. And then online is Chris Kern, our region manager. And they can answer policy questions if there are any that come up. Next slide. I did want to do a quick introduction to the Rogue Watershed for folks that might not be as familiar. So the Rogue originates in the West Cascades as a spring near Crater Lake. The two largest tributaries, the Applegate, the Illinois, flow out of California, out of the Siskiyou Mountains and into the river. And then the river actually cuts through the Oregon coast range on its way to the sea at Gold Beach. So it's pretty diverse ecologically, going through these different provinces and types of habitat. The Rogue is unique in Western Oregon. So the Rogue is naturally hotter and drier in summer than any of the other coastal watersheds. And climate projections are predicting more heat and more severe drought. Ecologically, we're much more similar to the watersheds and streams and rivers in Northern California than any of the other coastal watersheds in Oregon. And our fish are tied, if you look at some of the, like federal designations, our fish are tied with Northern California fish stocks, not Northwest or Central Oregon, Central Coast fish stocks. Bear Creek, which we're here in the Bear Creek watershed right now. Bear Creek kind of parallels I five between Ashland and Medford on its way to the Rogue. Bear Creek is the meat, the most urbanized stream on the coast of Oregon. More people live in this watershed than live in any of the coastal counties in Oregon. So by far, this is an impacted, impacted stream. Now, the Corps of Engineers operates two reservoirs on this map, Lost Creek, kind of on the upper right of the map and Applegate Reservoir. Again, unique to the Rogue, these core dams were built with fish needs as a primary purpose. We're not aware of any other place where the dams were authorized with fish needs right up there with flood control, municipal irrigation water. Yeah, it's, it's a unique situation. For instance, a significant portion of the stored water in the reservoirs is allocated to fish use downstream in the summertime. Outside of flood control, the Corps is operating in a fish friendly manner. And ODFW conducted years of research to help the Corps do just, just that. Finally, we have conservation plans in place for most of our native migratory fish species. Plans that guide our stewardship and a whole lot of work is being done by a lot of groups, partners out there. Trying to get Rogue fish the best chance to thrive in an increasingly erratic environment. Now, this map comes from our Rogue South Coast Multi-Species Plan. Purple is what we consider the lower Rogue. Yellow, the middle Rogue. Green is the upper Rogue. Now, historically, we have always considered the upper Rogue in our nomenclature to be historically the Gold Ray Dam site up to Jess Dam at Lost Creek Reservoir. Now we've moved it to Fisher's Berry. Next, please. Focusing in on the upper Rogue. So the upper Rogue is smaller than the lower two reaches, moving less water seasonally and gradually developing a more defined pool riffle ratio. Key points on the upper Rogue, I guess I don't think we need to go over that because of the but again, Fisher's Berry Boat Ramp at the lower end, about River Mile one twenty-five. And up there, Barrier Dam and Coal Rivers Hatchery and McGregor Boat Ramp about River Mile one fifty-seven. So these thirty-two miles of the upper Rogue and its tributaries produce the native migratory fish you see in the left. And I'm going to talk about a few of those briefly. The only Rogue fish currently listed under the Federal Dangerous Species Act is the Coho Sam. Now, most Cohos spawn in rare tributary streams. Early run summer steelhead are pretty unique. This is the reach where you find early run summer steelhead. These fish spend the summer in the river between Fisher's Berry and Coal Rivers before swimming into tributaries in the winter to spawn. You won't find early run summer steelhead anywhere else in the Rogue Watershed. The upper Rogue also produces both spring and fall Chinook salmon. But while spring Chinook, or excuse me, while fall Chinook are widely distributed around several hundred miles in this watershed, spring Chinook are stuck here. Next slide. And I say stuck because spring Chinook are considered a state sensitive species. They're the species most impacted by dam construction. Jess Dam and Lost Creek Reservoir blocked habitat that supported one-third of the spawning population. Not only that, the dam blocked access to pristine cold water habitat. So now spring Chinook, which formerly ranged well up into the middle part and south part of the Rogue, they almost exclusively spawn in the thirty-two miles of the upper Rogue we've been talking about. Big Buick Creek is the only tributary that supports a significant number of spawning fish on an annual basis. So this is it. This is the habitat we have to produce Rogue spring Chinook. And it's habitat that's having some problems. So the Corps has documented a loss of gravel following dam construction over the years in the first, I think it's five to 10 miles below the dam. We're trying to fix that. Now, just to be upfront, Chinook in Southern Oregon, Northern California have been petitioned for listing under the Endangered Species Act. And spring Chinook are one of the primary reasons. There's growing concern about spring migrating fish because they historically relied on snow melt to facilitate migration. And snowpack is declining. There's also genetic concerns as well. So if Rogue spring Chinook are listed under ESA or Western Pond Turtles have also been petitioned for listing. Other things may come up that we can't predict. Regardless, I want to make one thing clear. How these stewards, the upper Rogue, is going to determine the sustainability and long-term viability of a spring Chinook salmon in this river. Next. I want to present some slides on seasonal use of the Ro, upper Rogue. A lot is going on every month of the year. And if you wouldn't mind clicking two times. To start the year, winter steelhead migrating upriver on their spawning migration, they don't get up to the upper Rogue till March, April. So around March, we've got winter steelhead getting up into this area. In this time period, spring Chinook eggs and alemons are incubating in the gravel and fryer beginning to emerge. And then fall Chinook eggs are incubating in the gravel. Next slide. And if you could hit that another time. That's it. So winter steelhead in April through May are actively spawning. And the upper Rogue is a stronghold for winter steelhead in the watershed. One of the things we found in the last three years is extensive spawning in the main stem by winter steelhead. In the low water years since 2022, forty to eighty percent of the spawning activity has been in the main stem and not in the tributaries. This is brand new information and to be honest, something we did not expect. Also, in this time period, spring Chinook are actively feeding and growing and fall Chinook are just, the fryer just beginning to emerge from the gravel. Next slide. Also in May, this is the time when smalls, which are the juvenile fish that are ready to go to sea, they start moving downstream, mostly Coho and steelhead smalls. But some of the Chinook are starting to move slowly downstream as well. Next slide. And I think if you could hit that three times, two or three. So May through June, while winter steelhead eggs are incubating and fryer beginning to emerge, we have adults starting to come up and stream into this area again. So early run summer steelhead and spring Chinook adults are migrating into the upper Rogue at this time period. Next. July through August. So in this period, we've got early run summer steelhead not found anywhere else. And spring Chinook, they might, they continue to migrate up here, but they're holding here through the summer months. The majority of the early run spring Chinook hold in deep pools of the upper Rogue upstream of Dodge Bridge. Now salmon don't feed during their spawning migration. So these fish are pretty special. I mean, they've accumulated a ton of fat to be able to sit there in these deep pools for two to four months at a time for spawning in September. So the early run spring Chinook that are above Dodge Bridge are most affected by dam construction in operation and are the portion of the run that is the focus of our conservation plan. So a unique portion of the run exists above Dodge. Next. September and October, this starts the spawning season. And it starts earlier here than any other reach of the Rogue because spring Chinook start the earliest. So spring Chinook start to spawn at the upper end near Big Buick Creek and McGregor Park and Lost Creek, September first. Now spawning is a little bit, it gets later Chinook spawning as you move downstream. Fall Chinook as, are starting to enter the river at this time, the upper Rogue. Next slide. And if you could hit that three times, I think, or a couple of times. So in this period, spring Chinook eggs are in the gravel and fall Chinook are beginning to spawn. And that's the perfect segue to this slide. So how fish lay their eggs are part of the story in this discussion. So salmon lay their eggs in nests called reds. The female digs down into the gravel with her tail and in the process ends up scraping detritus and algae off the rocks and creates a patch of clean looking gravel. We actually use that to count fish oftentimes. The female moves forward and covers the fertilized eggs of gravel and in the process creates a mound at the downstream end, downstream of a bowl where the digging is stopped. So the eggs and alemons. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. They're incubating down in the gravel as you can kind of see in that back simile photo on the floor right. Just as an aside, the photo on the left is the classic shape of a red. That photo was, I took that photo on Main Street, just a block or two away here in Bear Creek. That's a summer steelhead pair. There are actually a couple of fish in the bowl of that red right there. That's about probably two feet long or two feet wide and about four feet long. Next slide. There have been studies that show egg and alemon mortality due to jetboat operation. So several in Ogle documented loss of eggs, alemons, and reds in water depth ranging from six to eighteen inches. And some of the data there are shown in that table. ODFW requested seasonal constraint on commercial traffic in the Hellgate Recreation Area, the Middle Road because of eggs, alemons in the gravel, October through April. And that was based on this study that included concern about water pressures created with traffic over the reds. Next slide. Now, ODFW studied the impacts of boat traffic in the Hellgate Recreation Area, but we studied impacts on juvenile salmon and steelhead. And again, that was for the Hellgate Recreation Management Plan. This study focused on juveniles only and included things like startle response, like different boat types passed by the fish. Our report states upfront, eggs and alemons were already protected by BLM rules that restrict motorized boats to the period, commercial boats to the period, May through September. So there's no commercial traffic October through April when eggs are in the gravel. Next. Another study found that at water depths of five to nine inches, jets boats, a loss from jetboat crossings approached a hundred percent. And that included the removal of gravel on the top and the washing away of eggs. But almost more to the point, we wanted to emphasize really quickly that's important to include in this statement. Depressed stocks or stocks that are reliant on specific or restricted stream reaches for spawning could be particularly vulnerable to jetboats and appropriate restrictions may be warranted. Next slide. So what does this mean for the Rogue? We have data on water depth over spring schnook reds in the upper Rogue. A significant portion of spring schnook reds in this river are located in water depths where studies have documented losses to jetboat operation. And remember that water depth will change with different flow levels and reservoir releases. And I want to stress, we've been in drought conditions almost continually since 2013. That affects a lot of things, including the ability to fill Lost Creek Reservoir. The fill season is January one through, normally through April, now through early to mid-May. During that time period, we're working with the Corps to do everything we can to protect fish downstream while still filling that reservoir. That means that flows in the upper Rogue get abnormally low, much slower than they would be historically. All you have to do is look at the flow of the Prospect Gage upstream of the reservoir and the flows downstream at the McLeod Gage. So that's something that that really stands out for us is how low those river flows can get in this reach of river while we're trying to fill that reservoir, January through April to mid-May. Next slide. We also have aerial photos of spring schnook reds above Dodge Bridge and schnook reds above Fisher's Berry Boat Ramp. And you can see here, again, I mentioned that the female creates kind of clean patches of gravel as she digs. And the reds can be spread out through the river channel. Next slide. So this slide shows how not to use PowerPoint. We thought it was important to list some of this out, so I apologize. The potential impacts in white are where we think risk reduction is needed. And we do list some additional emerging concerns. Loss of spring schnook reds, eggs, and alemons by jetboats operating in shallow water. That's a concern that needs risk reduction. We think the biggest risk is the fall period prior to the rains, like we're in now. The reservoir is releasing about eleven hundred CFS and the tributaries aren't producing much at all at this time. It's also a problem during the reservoir fill season, we just talked about, January through mid-May. Loss or degradation of spawning gravel in the upper Rogue is an issue. Again, I mentioned the Corps has documented that we lost gravel in that upper upper reach below the dam. Loss of winter steelhead eggs, alemons in the gravel. Again, jetboats operating in shallow water. The risk is increased during that reservoir fill season and up during drought years where we've been seeing a whole lot of main stem spawn. I'll just, I won't read all the other issues, but I do want to mention as far as emerging issues, motorized tour boats, we do hear from anglers in the Middle Road that the continued level of operation because of turbidity and weeds that are dislodged effectively is reducing fishing hours in that reach of the river. That's that's an emerging concern. I don't have data, but we have heard that for quite a long time. Concerns from anglers in that reach, and that's certainly a concern for us.
Dan, you asked a question. You just said you've heard concerns from folks in the Middle Road. I'm assuming you meant to say the upper Rogue?
No, I meant to say the Middle Road with another operation. I've heard a couple of couple of complaints in the last probably two years about the upper Rogue. But we've heard from longstanding complaints in the grass pass area and below.
So two different areas.
Here's some proposals for risk reduction. Rattlesnake Rapids to Lost Creek, no jetboat use. The rationale for conservation action would be the spring schnook eggs, alemons in the gravel. This reach supports that unique population or that group in the population, the early-run springers above Dodge Bridge. We know that spawning gravel has been impacted by the dam. And actually today at noon, we've got a planning team led by Earth State that is trying to help us figure out how to restore spawning gravel in this reach of the river below the dam, restore what's been lost. We have winter steelhead eggs, alemons in the gravel. We've seen more spawning during drought in the main stem. And this is the primary oversum holding area for spring schnook and early-run summer steelhead. Next slide. Risk reduction below Rattlesnake Rapids. And there was a discussion, excuse me, earlier about should this be going downstream part? And certainly we've talked about it internally. But spring schnook, we have, we have fish resources that are very specific to the upper Rogue. And that's that reach from Fisher's Berry upstream to the dam. So risk reduction measure would be jetboats allowed mid-May through Labor Day. And we would, we would very much like to work with the board on potentially minimum flow regulations as well on years when we have severe drought and the reservoir isn't releasing enough water to provide protection, for instance, during the fill season. Again, the rationale for conservation, spring schnook eggs, alemons in the gravel. We've got that loss of gravel documented just below the dam. We're trying to fix that. We have the winter steelhead eggs, alemons in the gravel. The spring schnook eggs are the earliest spawning fish, so they're in right now. And the winter steelhead eggs are some of the latest spawning fish. And those eggs are in the gravel through typically through mid-June. This time period is similar to our recommended in-water work period. And that's just a window of time around the state where actions like work in the stream channel or physical manipulation of features in the stream, the river channels is allowed because we think it has the least impact on fishing and aquatic fish species, if that makes sense. The timing is intended to protect the most vulnerable life stages of fish. And typically that is for fish, the eggs, the period when eggs are incubating and the developing embryos are still in the ground. The in-water work period goes through June or starts June fifteenth. Oh, I want to add that that, those recommended in-water work periods have been adopted by other state agencies. It starts June fifteenth in this section, but we think reservoir releases that typically ramp up for fish needs around mid-May would provide adequate protection for winter steelhead eggs in this reach. Next slide. This is not Oregon State Marine Board authority. We acknowledge that. But dredging is done in support of the commercial operations in the lower Rogue and the middle Rogue. ODFW generally recommend against dredging for navigation in the upper Rogue. And again, it's because of spring schnook eggs and winter steelhead eggs. Documented loss of gravel, we're trying to restore a whole lot of unique fish and needs in this section of the river. I think with that, I'll end. If you have any questions?
Great. Excuse me. Great. Thank you so much, Dan. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Do you have any fish count data? See what the fish populations have done historically in section of the Rogue?
We have, for instance, for spring schnook, we had, well, for all species, we had the Gold Ray Dam count nineteen forty-two through two thousand and ten. For spring schnook, we have a carcass count that is effectively continuing that that count for us. So we count carcasses, we're counting carcasses right now of fish after they spawn. And that count of carcasses has historically correlated very well to the Gold Ray count. So in effect, two thousand and eleven to now, we're continuing to have our gold rate count of abundance for rogue spring schnook. If that makes sense.
Do you don't have mirrors or any setup to identify the number of fish coming into the river?
We, we do not. We develop up, we're working on developing and approving our estimates of winter steelhead abundance. Again, right now, it's through spawning surveys and red counts.
Okay, so your sense is the populations are still healthy but need to be protected. Is that true?
That is correct.
Are fish getting up above the dam? Is there fish ladders or anything?
No.
So the terminus point is the dam?
Correct.
Now, you have a size impacts of jetboat, the fish. You see other river activities that are impacting the spawning ground?
No. So I want to be clear about this. It's the type and level of use that we think is fairly new and something that that we think deserves some risk reduction. And again, this is a unique set section of the river with unique fish. Studies have shown that jetboats can impact eggs in the gravel. So we think there's, there's justification for precautionary.
Well, I understand the rationale, but you know, jet boats have been around for a long time and we still have a healthy population, you say, so I'm trying to rationalize that.
Yep. What we have to watch out for, our job is keeping these fish species around for present and current generations. We think at least that seven generations down the road principle is part of our mission statement. This is an additive impact to a lot of other impacts that have happened over time. I hope that came clear in this presentation.
Well, I do appreciate, I do appreciate your presentation. I didn't realize the character of the river and how it's associated more with the Californian population of fish in Oregon, so I do appreciate that. Okay.
May I add one other?
Sure.
I just want to add that impacts to habitat often take a long time to show up in fish response. So again, it's it's, it's the
Well, another question. You've talked about the drought that's been in place since two thousand and thirteen. The river levels have been pretty much maintained the same because of the dam, right?
For the most part, yes.
So the droughts have had somewhat of a minimum impact. The dam wasn't there, it'd be much different.
We would not have flow augmentation in summer.
Yeah.
Correct. I will add that in two thousand and twenty-two, we were looking at having flows in this river that haven't been seen since the mega drought in the nineteen thirties. If you remember, we had a whole bunch of rain that came in late April and May. If it wasn't for that, Lost Creek would not have filled and we were actually preparing for the potential of having catastrophic losses in schnook in the lower river.
I can't recall what happened in the nineteen thirties, but if you were to raise the day, what happened to the fish in the nineteen thirties to that period?
We don't have good documentation. We do know though that flows at Gold Ray, I think it's Gold Reg Gage, dropped down to as low as, I think, six hundred CFS. No one in this room has ever seen the Rogue River at six hundred CFS and God forbid we ever do. I have read references to the drought in the twenties and thirties, extended drought. A one watershed assessment on a trip in our, in the Rogue, referred to it as a mega drought. Yeah, actually, the Corps documents and planning, when they planned for, planned Lost Creek and others for like worst-case low-flow scenarios, they referred to the nineteen thirties. Thanks.
Go ahead, Member Lambert.
Dan, you, you mentioned a couple of studies in there and that I reviewed those studies in particular. And some things pointed out to me or came out to me in reviewing those studies. And one of the things was that the impacts that they saw, mortality rates of about the twenty to forty percent, et cetera, in some of the studies were due to repeated use.
So we yeah, I'll be in here, you know.
They're due to repeated use, repetition, and they're due to the size of motor and the size of displacement, right? So that was a common theme among some of those, those studies that were done in regards to jetboat impacts on camera. So my question is, on the section above Rattlesnake Rapids there up that you are proposing a complete ban on jetboats. What, what is the rationale for that? Because from my understanding, the level of jetboat use, now again, the mini jets may be growing, so please feel free to point on that. But the level of jetboat use above Rattlesnake Rapids to the dam is super low. And it really hasn't increased much in recent years. Below Rattlesnake, I get, I'm asking, Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
That, that's exactly right. The reason we're proposing that is out of precaution about changes, about new uses, new level of uses, repetitive crossings of jetboats in, in reds and such. So above Rattlesnake, we do think also that there's year-round concern. Because not only do we have eggs in the gravel for an extended period of time, but again, this is the primary holding area, those, those fish are holding in those deep pools. We don't know and not, we're not aware of any data on jetboat impacts on holding spring schnook. So it, it basically, if I'm explaining correctly, I'm trying to explain that we have year-round concerns in the upper Rogue. And coming from the potential for, for new and higher levels.
Thank you. Any more questions, Member Lambert?
Do you have any? Go ahead.
I did. So early on in your presentation, you mentioned that is it spring schnook is, has been petitioned for listing. Is there a schedule or process outlined for a decision on that?
I'm not aware of any hard dates at, at this time. What all we know from our preliminary discussions with the National Fishery Service is if they decide to proposal listing, then there's a year in which to provide the public and agencies on that, that proposal before they would actually include a species on the endangered species list.
Okay. And then kind of a similar question. So we do have So we do have Coho as a listed species right now. What is the consequence or liability or risk to us as an organization? If we take those recommendations, suggestions that y'all came up with and basically say, eh, no. In other words, ignoring your recommendations, it's as it relates to existing or potentially listed fish.
I cannot speak for the nation and will not speak with the National Fishery Service. Again, we can't predict. With Coho, I do want to stress. Coho primarily spawn in rare and tributaries of the upper road. They're not to a significant level spawning or rearing in the main stem. They will move through at different times. Soon with the fall rains, the little fish will, some of them will float down from the trips and then move back up into other tributaries of the upper road. But they're not a main stem dependent fish like Chinook are. And again, spring Chinook have documented to have been impacted by dam construction and operation. Which is why we focus our reservoir operations that affect the main stem on spring Chinook protection primarily as our first goal.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, a little clarity on what you just stated. The Coho are not a listed species, not listed endangered species. You said they were a threatened species.
Correct.
Which is different.
Correct.
One more question. From your, can we go back to the slide for where you had the listed rationale and kind of a priority, I believe? Somewhere in there, I don't remember if it was that slide or the next one, somewhere in there you listed no jet boats between the month of bank to lake day below Rattlesnake.
That would be the next slide.
Yeah. So missing out of that is any size restrictions? Size of motors, speed, weight of boat, et cetera. Are you proposing all jet boats allowed to be able to operate below Rattlesnake in that time period?
I think it's better to say we would be happy to work with you and would encourage you to further refine the board itself to further refine jet boats as. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but no, if we're taking your set of recommendations, there's no formal recommendation on, at this point, on size or.
Happy to work with the board on that, and even or encourage you to consider refining that statement.
Thank you. That was actually a question that was kind of on my mind as well. Do we have any other questions for? Okay, thank you very much for coming out today. And at this point, we have a break on our schedule. We're about 15 minutes ahead of time. So we have a half, a half hour break planned. So let's go ahead and take that for our next speakers in the audience. So we'll be back here at 10:15 with Taylor and Emily Grant. Oh, pardon me, River Guardians and then Taylor and Emily Grant.
Okay, it's just about 10:15, so let's get back into our meeting. We have our fourth group of speakers, the Rogue River Guardians. Before you start your presentation, since there's four of you, can you introduce yourselves?
Oh, yes, I'm Ann Bonser and I've had the great privilege of living on the banks of the Rogue River for exactly 50 years.
I'm Bob Hunter, I've lived in the Rogue Valley for over 46 years and currently live in Rouge. And I will cut my introduction out of my comments so I can save time. I'm Michael Parker, I'm a recently retired professor at Southern Oregon University, been there for 30 years. I first met the Upper Rogue in 1975. I'm a river ecologist.
I'm Don Blazer, I have lived on the river since 1973.
Great, thank you, the floor is yours.
Chair Jackson, board members, thank you for coming to the Rogue Valley and giving the Upper Rogue Guardians an opportunity to present to you today on this important issue. The Upper Rogue Guardians are a diverse group of local citizens who are deeply concerned about the impacts of current jet boat use and the future proliferation of jet boat use on the Upper Rogue River and adjacent public lands. Other than for emergency and public safety responders, law enforcement and government agencies, we are recommending prohibition against operating watercraft with motors greater than 15 horsepower in the Upper Rogue River from Table Rock, Stone Bridge, upstream to Cold River's fish hatchery. Purpose would be to limit noise, to protect public safety, fishing wildlife, water quality, stream banks from erosion, public parks and refuges, streamside property and property values and traditional river users and businesses. In this regard, a petition recommending this action has been presented to the board with our materials, which are all included in these papers up there. And the petition now has over 2,000 signatures. We have a video we'd like to present that we could play right now. Thanks for listening to the video. I have submitted written testimony. I hope the board will take time to review. It's in the packet. I have a couple of additional comments. First, I want to emphasize that it's not just a small group of homeowners and fishermen that are concerned about the adverse of jet boats. Over 2,000 people have signed their petition supporting the 15-horsepower limitation. 859 people responded to the 2022 Oregon Park Survey saying they didn't want a jet boat concession in the park. We have provided extensive comments from that survey in our materials, which would be pretty enlightening if people get it. 2,600 people participated in the OKT Oregon citizen table process, and almost 60% listed increase in jet boat use as a top concern. And two-thirds believe bans or limitations on some activities was the best way to address conflicts and concerns. There are many people in our community across the state that love and care about the Rogue River. Second, conflicts on the Upper Rogue River caused by jet boat use are significant. And these have only gotten worse since this board first considered this issue in 2017. Increased jet boat use, especially from one commercial jet boat operator, has been driving these conflicts. We are not trying to change things by restricting that jet boat use in the Upper Rogue. Quite to the contrary, we are trying to preserve the historic status quo and protect the river. The big change came when commercial jet boat tours started operating above Table Rock Road. This was a huge departure from historic and traditional uses. A gentleman's agreement did exist not to operate jet boats above Table Rock Road Bridge, which had previously been widely respected. I have spent 46 years recreating by the Rogue. Jet boat use was not a traditional use above the bridge when historically such use was rarely encountered. Any boats that were encountered were small private boats. I have personally been weighed by commercial jet boat while wave fishing in the Shenandoah Lake area, state refuge. And one of my favorite quotes was from Guy's Bridge to Tubel Park. I have used Tubel State Park and adjacent Shenandoah Refuge for bird watching, fishing, and but now I avoid this section of river and these public lands where two boats are running. It is no longer a sacred useful experience. It is a shame one commercial business has been allowed to co-opt and exploit the personal gains that had been a wonderful and heavily used community resource. It should not have been allowed to happen. Some uses in some places are just not compatible with pre-existing traditional uses or environmental stewardship. Lastly, the Rogue River is one of the state's most iconic and beloved rivers, known internationally for its salmon and steelhead fishery. The river and its fishery are extremely important economically to the region and support a multimillion-dollar sport fishing and commercial fishing industry. The Upper Rogue contains critical habitats that supports this fishery. I spent over 30 years of my career working on Rogue River restoration efforts. The state has invested millions of dollars in this basin to protect and enhance the fishery. Much of that investment drank against salmon and steelhead sacred spawning grounds in the Upper Rogue. Unregulated jet boat use in the Upper Rogue, predictable future proliferation compromises these investments and poses a risk to salmon and steelheads and the health of the river. There is nowhere in the state more worthy of protection. All our state agencies do everything they can to protect it. We hope the Marine Board will do its job and implement regulations to protect Upper Rogue as an incredible public resource. Thank you, and now I'll let Don Blazer.
Yes, thank you, board, for being here. I want to talk about safety. Based on the 51 years I've lived on the Rogue, I feel qualified to discuss safety issues. I've owned jet boats, drift boats, rafts, kayaks. I've floated down the Rogue since 1973 in everything known to man. I'm a licensed sailboat skipper versus nautical rules of the road. I have rescued over a dozen people off the Rogue during my years. I've served on several nonprofit committees in the Upper Rogue area, including Guardians of the Upper Rogue. In the summer of 2017, while rafting, I witnessed a tour jet boat run over the top of a young teen near Tubel Park. The jet never saw the teen, but he saw the jet and drove underwater. I reported this near miss to the sheriff's office when I got off the river. I learned that there was no law regarding jets on the river, and no report was taken. I've been bothered by this incident since the day I witnessed it. Over the last year, I learned that the marine sheriff does not record safety phone calls unless you officially report a boating incident calling 911. Most people are unaware of this, and many feel it's wrong to call 911 unless it's an emergency. Now, you know why there are few recorded complaints to the marine sheriff. The sheriff did give me his direct line to call if I noted a violation. We have one-way traffic floating with the river down the Rogue from the dam to Table Rock Bridge, about 25 miles. That river flows roughly 3 to 5 miles per hour. Rafters, kayakers, outboarders, and fishermen drift at that speed and rarely create problems for other users. Many are unaware of the dangers of drifting the Rogue, and trouble usually starts when falling out of a raft that may have hit a rock, a tree, or a brush. Jets travel around 20, 25 to 30 miles in the opposite, opposite our one-way floating direction. They have a need to read the water, and if they need to stop suddenly in shallow water, they can suck up debris and rocks into the impeller, disabling their power. These boats also generate large wakes as they steer by propulsion with no rudder, keel, or propeller. Picture air being released from a balloon, and you'll have an idea of steering by propulsion. And I'm putting here a note to see Grant Woolridge's new two, part one on jet boat operations. It's not an easy thing to do. The other concern is understanding the danger of getting blinded by the sun hitting the water and not seeing a raptor or swimmer. Since the inception of the commercial tour boat company, the Upper Rogue usage changed. There's no, there's now a significant public safety concern. The Upper Rogue is too small and often too shallow to safely accommodate jet boats and other river users simultaneously. See attached maps of 21 identified changes. You can see them, the areas we've identified as being dangerous. A jet boat has limited navigation in many narrow channels. You can't safely maneuver in these areas. These are, there are many blind spots in the Upper Rogue and many places where jet boats must travel at high speeds to navigate. Adding jet boat traffic to the Upper Rogue is a recipe for a tragic accident or even death. The wakes of these jet boats also create a safety hazard for people floating, swimming, or fishing in the river. Jet wakes can swamp an inflatable raft, flip a kayak, and knock over people waiting in the river. Individual jet boat traffic can be expected to increase as the population grows. And now, mini jets can go anywhere on the river or rocks, and that's another huge concern. So I have some kind of rhetorical questions. Why are jet skis banned, but mini jets are okay to use on the river? Why do we have mile, five mile per hour limits to protect swimmers and other boaters in every freshwater lake and most harbors, but the river is wide open for 30 to 50 miles per hour? Why isn't it a state law that mandates a bicycle rides with traffic flow? Do rafters and jet boat owners abide by nautical rules of the road? If so, what are they? Are rafters aware of any rules? Why don't jet boat drivers need a license showing they can control their vessel? The Upper Rogue has traditionally been used by drift boat fishermen, bank fishermen, rafters, other inflatables and recreationalists. Jet boat operation in the Upper Rogue have rarely been seen until recently and are incompatible with these traditional uses. A 15-horsepower restriction above Table Rock Bridge would protect aquaturism, but most of all, a public fatality like the one I witnessed in the summer of 2017. Now, I want to show you quickly. You've got it. Video, just to show you how fast things go wrong. Air bill. Not very high quality, but you get the point. If this had been a raft, they'd all get, in my opinion. That's it.
I would like Dr. Michael Parker to speak to our memory tax.
So, like I said, my name is Michael Parker. I'm a freshwater ecologist. I have over 40 years' experience conducting research on aquatic organisms with particular focus on river ecology and human impacts on the food webs. While I was at SOU, I conducted research and I taught courses in freshwater ecology, fish biology, conservation, and led student research in those areas as well. I'd like to focus my time on what I see are significant impacts, potential impacts of jet boats on the ecological integrity of that upper river. And I'd like to appeal to the Marine Board's environmental stewardship mandate as expressed in your mission statement. As I engaged in learning about this issue, with the exception of the really good fish data that ODFW provides that Dan presented us earlier, but I was stuck by the general lack of scientific evidence brought to bear on this issue, particularly given the extensive body of relevant research on river ecology that I'm intimately familiar with. I'm also quite surprised that an ODFW study on tour boats of juvenile salmonids in the middle row, conducted over 30 years ago, has been the primary reference used by boat operators to justify expansion of jet boat use into the upper river. They frequently misrepresent results of the report in claiming that, in comparison to the large tour boats. And this is the direct quote, "Slow-moving watercraft and people waiting in the river disturbed fish the most." That's not an accurate statement. It doesn't reflect the results of that report. In fact, the report concluded, based on physiological measurements and behavioral measurements, some of which Dan mentioned earlier, that, quote, "motorboat operations increased stress in juvenile chinook salmon." The report did not address in any way waiting, people waiting in the river at all. Although there is some research, and I'll talk about that in a minute. I have also heard comments to the effect that there are no data specific to the Upper Rogue to refute claims that jet boats do not harm the river and surrounding habitats. Ignoring for the moment the obviously misplaced version of proof argument raised by such comments, I argue that there is an abundance of scientific research to inform us on this issue. Therefore, I prepared a review of relevant scientific literature. And that's been included also in this three-ring binder you have available. In my review, I include references in four general areas that address potential impacts of jet boats. One, boat wakes, hydraulic disturbance and erosion. Two, disturbance, aquatic invertebrates and river food webs. Three, aquatic vegetation. And four, direct and indirect effects on fish and wildlife. I'm an academic, and I can talk for 50 minutes, give you a 50-minute lecture on every one of those topics, but I only have a few minutes. So I'm going to focus on just a couple of things. First, I'd like to discuss what I mean by an unnatural disturbance in the ecological processes that I mentioned in the video. Key points here. All rivers have what can be considered a natural hydrograph, which is defined by the topography and weather within a particular region. In our part of the Pacific Northwest, the natural hydrograph can be described as a winter flood, summer drought hydrograph. What that means is major hydrologic disturbances take place during winter high-water events. And bed mobilizing floods that determine the shape of the channel are very important during this time because they sort of determine the geomorphic characteristics of the river and the ecology of the river during the summer low-flow period. This also means that during the summer low-flow period, which is generally April through October here, bed mobilizing disturbances are essentially non-existent. They don't occur. This is important because the low-flow period is the period of greatest productivity and organismal growth in the river. Why is this relevant to the jet boat issue? As you've seen in the video, and as you well know from your regulatory work, jet boats produce very large wakes, and their propulsion systems exert strong turbulent forces on the riverbed. The power of these turbulent forces is strong enough to mobilize bed materials along shorelines and in the main channel beneath the hull of a passing boat, also causing increased turbidity and dislodging a lot of vegetation. So in essence, think of the disturbance of each boat passage through a narrow channel as being like a short-term, short-duration winter flood event. Now, multiply that short-term winter flood event by 18 passages through one section of river on a given day, up to seven days a week, continuously over that four months of what is normally the low-flow, high-productivity, no disturbance portion of the year. That is a very altered and very unnatural disturbance regime. That's what I mean when I say that in the video. Numerous studies, and I've included them in the bibliography, have shown that frequent disturbances as simple as just overturning the stones that make up the bed of the river result in steep declines in both abundance and diversity of catched algae and benthic macroinvertebrates. The frequency of disturbance events in all of those studies was much less than the current level of disturbance being imposed by jet boat passages along the Upper River current. Reducing populations of benthic invertebrates reduces the primary food source for juvenile salmonids and for resident fishes. And because of that, it has a direct negative effect on the growth and survival of those fishes. Reducing populations of larval aquatic insects on the riverbed also results in fewer adult insects emerging from the river. Research has shown that adult aquatic insects have a much higher nutritional value than most terrestrial invertebrates and are the primary food source for nesting birds, bats, lizards, spiders in the riparian zone. So declines in emerging aquatic insects have been shown to have large negative effects on terrestrial consumer populations as well as fish. You can start connecting some dots, I think. You also saw in the video the plume of fine sediment that was produced by the jet boat wakes impacting that shoreline. Even though the shore was dominated by large cobble-sized stones, there was considerable resuspension of fine sediments. Those fine sediments contributed to overall turbidity of the river, which is bad, but they also get transported and deposited on the riverbed downstream. This resuspension deposition cycle repeats itself each time a wake interacts with that shoreline, causing a chronic siltation problem in some areas, in particular in shallow shoreline areas. That's important, excuse me, because fine sediments typically don't occur, except don't get distributed to the river, except during winter storms. And siltation in the streambed is typically not something that happens during that summer low-flow period. So you're adding an additional non-natural disturbance. Secondly, juvenile salmonids tend to occupy relatively shallow, moderate-flow habitats along river margins where this type of siltation would be the greatest. In a recent paper by Mary Powers Group at UC Berkeley, even small amounts of fine sediments resulted in major shifts in the invertebrate prey base, resulting in reduced growth and survival of juvenile steelhead trout. Moreover, this is really important, they found that there was no threshold below which fine sediments were not harmless. Even tiny amounts of fine sediment were harmful to the growth and survival of juvenile steelhead. Now, consider, every young salmon and steelhead migrating to the ocean that originate from spawning sites like Dan talked about this morning within or above this section of the Rogue River, and that includes all the tributaries up there in which there's a lot of restoration work being done to improve spawning habitats for these species. All of those fish, and I want to, somebody mentioned Coho, which is a threatened species. That includes Coho migrating through that section of the river. All of them must pass through this portion of the river. In doing so, they are likely experiencing, as I just suggested, fewer food resources and greater stress levels. In other words, all juveniles, well, all juvenile salmonids leaving the Upper Rogue River, starting on their 130-plus-mile sojourn down to the ocean, are starting at an energy deficit potentially because of the impacts on the food web of the jet boats. With direct, or respect to direct impacts on salmonids, we often focus on the spawning habitat, and that's what Dan focused so brilliantly on this morning. And he described the importance of that upper river for spawning by both spring chinook and steelhead. And he also talked about the risks that jet boats potentially play in destruction to that spawning habitat. I hopefully just illuminated some of the ways that juvenile salmonids are affected by boats through the food web and through impacts of disturbance on the streambed. I'd like to take a minute, just a minute, to finish up and talk about adult fish. Spring chinook, as Dan pointed out, have a very interesting life history that puts them at particular risk. Adult spring chinook enter the river as early as February and move into the river above the former Gold Ray Dam site from May to July, as he pointed out. Those adult fish spend five months in the Upper River seeking thermal refuges where they can rest prior to spawning in the fall. The majority of them, he said, were above Dodge Bridge, but they're throughout that whole section above Fisher's Ferry. During that time, they remain inactive in order to conserve the energy stores that they accumulated in the ocean. And those energy stores are critical for reproductive success. It's that fat that goes into making the eggs that the females deposit in the ribs. Any increase in activity in response to potential threats, along with the associated elevated stress hormone levels, increases metabolism and depletes the energy stores so critical for reproduction. In addition to the hydraulic turbulence created by boats passing over the top of those resting areas, jet boats and all-power boats produce a lot of and very intense underwater noise. This is a fairly recent area of study in fisheries science, but recent hydroacoustic studies have shown that noise produced by power boats, including those with engines much less powerful than the ones currently being used on tour boats running up and down the upper road. Those noises elicit strong avoidance and startle responses in young Pacific salmon, even when the boats are passing a distance that's far greater than what fish experience in the road. Okay, so I'm going to stop there. If you keep going on, I can go on and on and on and on. Like I said, I'm an academic. I could do this all morning. But hopefully, I've painted a picture of what some of the ecological impacts might be and pointed to the fact that operating jet boats has significant ecological consequences for the river and adjacent riparian habitats, and is in no way a benign activity. So I'd like to thank you for considering the proposal to limit boat traffic to smaller motors to try to lessen the impacts on the ecology in the thirty-plus, the integrity of the.
Thank you. Just a reminder, y'all started at about ten fifteen, and we're trying to keep this to about a half an hour, so.
Just a minute.
We'll give you a couple more minutes here.
Thank you.
I only need one minute.
Great. Well, then we have questions for you, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I've been so inspired reading your biographies on the Marine Board's website because I see that you, like me, often seek out Oregon's waterways for the safety, peace, quiet, and spiritual renewal these natural places provide. But it's not only humans who benefit from the Rogue River. It's known worldwide as a safe home for spawning salmon and thriving trout. A bountiful variety of birds build nests along its banks, fish its channels, and catch a multitude of insects that swarm over its waters at dusk. Mammals like otter and beaver call it home. Deer, elk, and bear rely on it. This valley is named in its honor. From the oral tradition of indigenous people, we know that the Rogue River has played this life-sustaining role in our valley for ten thousand years. The change is inevitable, but there are some things worth preserving. In this modern tumultuous world, restoring these natural places to health is a necessary courageous task. There are so few quiet natural places left. It's in your hands. You have the power to do this.
Thank you for coming out today. I'm with you. Do you have any questions?
Y'all have lived in this area for a long time, as you presented yourself. So you've seen changes, I'm sure, whether you're. So, and you speak about limiting boating activities, specifically the jet boating. Trying to ascertain if you're talking about commercial jet boats or private jet boats or or just what the composition is you're speaking to. I don't know what the density of boat operations is. You showed the video with the commercial jet boating operation doing three-sixties up on the river. Is that the problem, or is individual jet boaters, or are there a lot of individual jet boaters? Then you speak to limiting horsepower, fifteen horsepower, well, you're not going to operate a jet boat with fifteen horsepower. Are you trying to limit all-power boats that are greater than fifteen horsepower? I'm just trying to get an understanding of that.
Yeah, I'll try to do that thing. First, about fifteen horsepower. Traditionally, a lot of the river guys that take their boats down the river will put a outboard on their boat so they can go back up a little bit and rework the run. It's not for transporting their boats up and down the river in a big way. So it's trying to make sure that, you know, the traditional use and activity of how a lot of guys operate is. In terms of other types of jet boats in general, as I mentioned, actually, we're starting to see an increase now with private jets and jets now even higher up in the upper river. Traditionally, there has not been a lot of private jet boat activity. So, but when they do show up in some places, it does create conflicts and it does have all the logical thoughts you thought about. It's the arise of the commercial jet boats and their operations and the larger boats and the frequent trips and the high speeds and everything that has gotten everyone's attention, saying, we've got to do something. And they affect others. Other than, I mean, throw a lot of private boats, is they continue to increase a lot of these big tour boat jets that really have recipe. With this, so we're really focused on trying to keep the river use like it pretty much had been historically, which allows people to have a peaceful, safe recreational opportunity on the river. So that's why we don't think any jets above Table Rock Road. Now, below Table Rock Road, there's some of the same issues, but when Gold Ray Dam was in, that had a level of, higher level of private jet boat use as people were buzzing. There's only way to go up and back. And I think some jet boat manufacturers used to go right into Bill, ask the boats down there, stuff like that. So we tried to recognize that past use and not try to affect that in our quest. Also, I mean, it does leave five and a half miles for others to operate, I mean, you know, over the break, the end size, two little state parks.
I realize you're from academia, as you stated. I'm from Alaska. I spent most of my life in Alaska, and I see the resilience of salmon populations. They tend to respond to whatever conditions are changing on the river all the time, whether it's floods or what have you. And it appears here that salmon populations thrive even through the history of all the activities that occurred on the river. Do you see that differently?
Yes, very different. Well, I spent a fair bit of time in Alaska, too, and know a lot of fishery violence. And many of the reports on the impacts of jet boats on salmon have been done in Alaska. They're very concerned that they're causing declines in salmon populations. So there's a huge concern in jet boat operations on rivers where their salmon population is less, and much of the literature comes from there. And when you say thrives, you know, everybody's got a different baseline. You know, if we look at populations now, they're a fraction of what they were historically. So prior to a lot of human activity in this basin, I would say populations were thriving. I'd say that they're doing okay in some places, but like the spring chinook, they're not thriving.
But Dan earlier said he thought their populations were still half healthy in the road. Do you challenge that, or?
Well, you know, it's a difference in perspective. Yeah, I think, you know, when you lose thirty percent of the spawning habitat of a run of fish, you've compromised that fish population significantly. So they're doing heroic efforts to keep that fish around. But like you said, it's been proposed for listing an indigenous species death, which means it's potentially on the door of going, if we don't do something about it.
All right.
Yeah, I would argue with that.
Thank you. Neverland, any questions?
Yeah, I just asked the same question that I asked Dan a little bit ago, I believe. I go back to, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll read through your documents. Thank you for filing, because it's pretty static out on the internet. I'm trying to research on that. I go back to the issue of repetition. That seems to be the thing, that repetitive use is really in cause of all those impacts, especially to the ground bed, rams, et cetera. I can understand where you're getting that repetition from the commercial average. What I struggle with, and forgive me, but I do take the task of, you know, considering limiting or banning a use of public pretty seriously, so ask me some pretty detailed questions, particularly in this case surrounding the use of private jet boats. It, to me, doesn't seem like that level of use of private jet boats in this stretch of river is so high. And again, this is just my perception, that it would cause that repetition and that damage through that process, either that we're listing between boats. Especially when I hear folks say that there is no, hardly any jet boat use above Rattlesnake Rapids. And I've heard that. Mr. Hunter has shared that with me in emails, that, you know, for the past forty years, he's floated that section of the river, and he's managed to reject it. So I struggle with banning something that folks say isn't really a mission. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, yeah, not yet. A good thing to think about is what happened with Snake River, where jet boat use has gone up five hundred percent since the Wild and Scenic section opened up in Hell's Gate Canyon and they restricted boat traffic, but jet boat traffic wasn't, and it's increased by about five hundred percent over a couple of decades, and the conflicts are huge. And so I think what Dan said earlier is that sort of protective idea, precautionary principle, do something now before we have to remedy it later with even a bigger hammer and bigger consequences.
Could I just add one sentence to that answer? I think the advent of mini jet boats means that at some point, the Marine Board is going to have to take on a huge task of regulating these boats all throughout waterways in Oregon. And it's going to be difficult. But it's going to be a lot easier to do it now than if you wait until thousands more Oregonians buy these mini jets. And we're seeing them proliferate everywhere. So I know it's a hard task, but it's going to be much harder if you wait to do it.
And I appreciate that, Dan, because that's the teasing out that I was trying to do at the Oregon Kitchen Table project, right? So is it mini jets the problem, is commercial jets, recreational jets on the stretch? So what I hear from you, correct me if I'm wrong, is in that stretch above Rattlesnake Rapids, mini jets are concerned.
Well, and also below Rattlesnake. We're seeing them now coming up. And, yeah, so I think our concern, correct me if I'm wrong, but is with all jet boats.
Steve, I should mention, I probably hear from over three today. Oh, I haven't personally, what I've heard now is a lot of reports on Alaska, there was of increase in private jet boat use in the upper river and actually pretty dramatic conflicts. I mean, where they go off and cut everyone's fishing lines when they go down in Narrow Island with this bank fishing, because it's narrow and it's that, or in Shady Cove, you have an economy based on basically raft rentals and kids and Tahiti's and stuff like that. And whenever there is a jet boat, even if they're not frequent up there now, there is a terrible conflict and people are put in danger. And if you see more of that, now's the time to nip it in the bud, because we're starting to see increases from what I hear from people.
On you.
Oh, I'd love to say something. I look at it, I look at the scenario of, you're looking at the past, and there's been an unwritten agreement with all of us in on jet boats, I still don't. If we never went past the Table Rock Bridge, and it was more of a common courtesy, everybody knew, hey, you know what, you go past there and you're dealing with rafters, people floating and swimming. No, we could go below and fish below. Now occasionally, someone would motor up above there and it's called sweeping, catch fish, that's fine. My big concern is, I've been following the mini jets. I don't know if you've seen the videos where they actually go over rocks. They go through small streams, they go beside a rock bridge and come back down. How do we know the person driving these vehicles, private? If you saw the commercial drivers that got the accident, these are private. Young guys, I would be one of them. I'd find a way to buy one. I'm twenty-seven years old and I'm going to fly up that river. And you're not going to tell me what to do. And the reason is, I was in the military. I'm not going to get shot. Somebody else will. You don't have the same level in my mind of responsibility that someone of monkey age might have, right? The other thing that bothers the heck out of me is you're driving something that's really a jet. It's not a regular boat. It's not a sailboat. It's not a twin-engine powerboat. It's none of those things. It's something that's running on propulsion and it steers kind of like an airplane, right? Why isn't there some kind of license for at least if these guys get in the river with river users, you know they're not going to hit you. You know they're going to know how to deal with it. That's always bothering. You don't just get in these things and take it off and go somewhere. And it isn't that there isn't great jet boat pilots that are out there. It's just, it's a matter of time. Somebody's going to get run over. I know it. But I know it. And it hasn't happened in the past because there's been no traffic in the past, or very little. The only one I've ever seen is Bob White, who owns River Wild, and he does experimental boats. And that's a year and see him, that'd be about it. Of course, and the sheriff and the rescue.
Any other questions? Lambert, Lambert, member with you? Actually, my questions were very similar to the questions from both of these gentlemen. What was the basis of the fifteen mile, or the fifteen horsepower? And that answered, and again, parsing out, are we talking about all jets, mini jets, personal jets or commercial? Getting a more solid answer on that. So, excuse me, thank you for coming out today. And our next group coming up is Taylor and Emily Grimes.
The Wide-Way Transition Board, Bob Hunter mentioned several times that there was a package distributed. We'll get that out there. We've got the roll. Make sure you get copies of that material.
You'll hear me. Board, you can't hear.
I seriously apologize. I was sick last week. It destroyed my throat. I am trying to talk as loud as I can. Is there?
You're holding on to the charging.
Okay.
I hear you. I will try and speak louder.
We will try really hard. Thank you.
Taylor and Emily Grimes, we own a commercial charter boat operation. We operate on a section of the Rogue River. This is encompassing. And we'd like to thank the Marine Board for allowing presentations and testimony today. You know, as a company with impeccable track records, privileged to be able to try and help flush out a lot of misinformation. That's one of my big goals here. And the nefarious activities that transpired and brought the Marine Board to Jackson County for this work session. It's no secret that misinformation and propaganda have enabled an organized attempt to eliminate powerboat use on the Upper Road River. The Marine Board has been dealing with this for many years now. The previous attempt for eliminating powerboat use was in 2017. It was organized by the Rogue Fly Fishers and a river resident named Greg Layton. Rules on the petition stated, based on the discovery, that if this happened again, more education, potentially more signage was needed. Over the last two years, many untrue statements have been made. I just heard some in the last presentation. Misinformation campaigns deployed, consultants hired in order to stimulate state agencies to take action on something that simply doesn't exist. The Marine Board itself held two special local meetings to help curb the misinformation. In the summer of 2022, we were made aware of yet another misinformation campaign. Engineers gained signatures on a petition that prevented jet boats from traveling upriver past Tubel Bridge at Tubel State Park. The misinformation campaign was designed to incite fear based on a lie that our company was working with you, the Marine Board, to bring our company to the town of Shady Cove. It was the only way a non-resident of Shady Cove could gain the signatures they needed in order to prevent our company from driving past their house. And let's keep in mind, our tour route is only ten miles long, and we go by approximately twenty homes. That's all. This section of river we operate on is arguably one of the lightest-traveled sections of river on the entire Rogue River. More people use the permitted wilderness section of the Rogue River than use this section of river we operate on on a daily basis. We're providing detailed video recordings of every trip taken in 2024, 23. The purpose of this is to dispel any misinformation that would pertain to our company not operating safely or courteously and clearly show the amount of river users encountered on a daily basis. On average, four to five other river users on a trip. We're providing this as Exhibit A to the board. So taking us back to the misinformation. So taking us back to the misinformation campaign in Shady Cove, there was something done about it and it was done with a former mayor. Former Mayor Sherry Tarben communicated directly with me about it. She verified the untruths with state agencies and she asked for the misinformers to leave her town. They weren't welcome in the city events and they were welcome and they weren't welcome to spread lies or dispense propaganda in her town. This communication will be shown as Exhibit B to you. So why are we here? We're here because the governor received a letter from the now mayor of Shady Cove spared on by a very small special interest group disguised as concerned citizens. It's really that simple. The logical outlook they used on this situation to us is simple. If I'm a citizen and I want to get the governor's attention and I send a letter, I am not going to get the attention. But if we get a municipality or a city to do it, well, now we're talking. That's exactly why we're here. The only problem with this is that everything in there is a lie. There's a general public council meeting in Shady Cove dated July sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And in this meeting, starting at fifty-one minutes and forty seconds into the recording, we have the following in this meeting. We have a meeting about our company. I'm ten miles, I'm a Central Point company. Not one true statement about our company was made in the city council meeting. We have non-professional river users informing the city council of Shady Cove. We have direct statements that Shady Cove doesn't have a problem. This is for the future and that happened more than once in the meeting. We have a condition where Mayor Ball invites Jackson County Commissioner Roberts to speak. Commissioner Roberts only can offer them more than once. If you have a problem, call your local law enforcement, get to know them. We have a mayor trying to decide on which version of a letter to send the governor. He likes the one that describes the protection of his riparian area to get her attention. I guess he didn't like the one that lists our company's name as well as the Oregon State Marine Board's name. That'll be in Exhibit Q. A public records request showed one of the letters stated Marine Board has recently relicensed our company to operate out of Tubel. I didn't know, you know, you did that, but apparently you do. We have a mayor quoted in the paper as saying he didn't write the letter to the governor because of our company. He wrote it because of mini jet boats. That's in Exhibit D to you. On a local radio station interview, Mayor Ball from Shady Cove suggests mini jet boats are a big problem. He states he requested in writing to the county commissioners to hold a public hearing and the commissioners refused. Also stating Jackson County Commissioners don't want to hear the truth. Email correspondence between County Commissioner Roberts and Mayor John Ball clearly indicates there was never a request by Mayor Ball. You'll see that in Exhibit N. You'll notice one confronted about it. When confronted about it, Mayor Ball deflects to an old administration for a reason why that doesn't exist. Yet he specifically stated he was the one on public radio. And there's other instances where Jackson County departments never received documents that Ball clearly said he copied them. You'll have that in Exhibit L. We have Mayor Ball quoted in the paper saying he has personally seen more than one mini jet boat crash on rocks in Shady Cove. Jackson County Sheriff's Department can confirm, there's never been a report on this, which would be unusual behavior for somebody that obviously wants as much evidence as possible for his cause. Heck, you'd think he'd even be able to take his cell phone out, take a picture. We have a mayor quoted in the paper saying Shady Cove has a prolific jet boat problem. Rogue Valley Times dated twelve, twenty-one, twenty-three. We have a mayor making reference to a large file he has of letters about our company. I submitted public records request, asked for the letters, answer? We don't have any letters. So now we enter Oregon Kitchen's tables. They told us what the issues were. They listened to each one of them. The three concerns were protect fish, more people using the river these days and lower water conditions. So let's run through these concerns. The largest multi-agency study ever conducted on the Rogue River was conducted just thirty miles downriver from the Gold Ray Dam site. The study was included in the Hellgate Management Recreation Plan and I've entered it as Exhibit E for you. This plan encompass everything. All forms of environmental concerns based on all types of recreation. It's four hundred and twenty-something pages long. The study was done in an area where there are approximately twenty to thirty times the amount of homes on the river in an area of the river during summer months that has less water volume than we operate at. We show that in Exhibit F for you. In a section of river that has forty to fifty times the amount of floating river traffic and twenty times the amount of jet boat traffic. It has vessels two to three times the size of our vessels, operating five to six more times more a day than we do. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife provides an executive summary and finds that all watercraft do disturb the fish, but floating watercraft and wading anglers disturb the fish the most. You'll find that in Exhibit G. A jet boat's thrust is at the top three to four inches of the water. When that jet boat is on plane, it's completely out of the water. There is no disturbance down at the bottom. Conversely, outboard motors use a prop and that spins below the bottom of the boat, usually twenty-four to thirty inches below the bottom of the boat. It's used mainly for fishing, used on drift boats. Most people using an outboard motor use a prop protector. Now, if you don't know what a prop protector is, a prop protector is an added option for your trolling motor. It simply protects the prop blades from encountering the bottom of the river. We estimate conservatively that seventy-five percent of all floating river users use them. Spinning the prop into the river bottom gravels happen so often, there's an entire industry devoting to protecting your prop. Your propeller chops up the bottom of the river and without having the prop protector, your prop is bent. You're out of prop. An example of a prop protector will be shown in Exhibit H. Imagine what a prop protector and a prop would do to a spawning bed. This is exactly why water pump propulsion watercraft are given the lesson impact rating. We also have wooden and fiberglass oars that rake the bottom of the river consistently during floating river navigation and especially at critical times of the year. And wading anglers, quite frankly, one of the most destructive studies ever has shown up to a ninety-six percent kill rate on ambles with a lock into the water and a lock back out. You'll have that in Exhibit I. The next one, more people using the river. I'll be submitting is Exhibit J in the form of a signed affidavit on the condition of use of the river prior to nineteen ninety-seven, and this is very important. In nineteen ninety-five, a new boat ramp was built one eighth mile downstream to Tubel State Park. And the years between nineteen ninety-five and ninety-seven, the gravel shoaled in, making the ramp unusable for at least five to six months out of the year. Prior to that date, nineteen ninety-five, there were two to three times the amount of powerboat jet boat traffic on that section of river. People forget that. Low water conditions, I really don't know what to think on that. I have Exhibit K for you. I have a twenty-year graph that seems to indicate a pretty even and steady look to it. I've run USGS everywhere else that low water conditions may be in the state of Oregon. It seems like the Crater Lake watershed is always just pretty darn solid. The Oregon Table Project, they did do a thorough job and I was really impressed with what they they did present. And I thought they did a good job. But there's just, it wasn't about actual fact. It was more about opinions. So moving on, we're going to submit as Exhibit L, a professional analysis to you based on the current river conditions post the Gold Ray Dam removal. We feel that's really important. Recently, we've had quite a bunch of misinformation being circulated about riverbank erosion on the Rogue River related to powerboats causing that. The geomorphic changes taking place in the Rogue River due to the removal of the Gold Ray Dam are becoming a situation that we believe needs to be addressed ASAP. Any and all studies ever performed have showed negligible negligible effect on powerboats. The most significant impact on riverbank erosion is from homeowner activity, replacing foliage with lawns, cutting trees down in the riparian area, cutting steps into the side of the riverbank. And then, of course, the natural river elevation and river channel changes due to geomorphic activity, things like that. Collectively, we've concluded previously engineered water control barbs on our section of river were not re-engineered and implemented after the removal of Gold Ray Dam. A complete oversight. Additionally, areas would be affected by the dam removal were never analyzed and preventative measures taken. This oversight is leading to the deterioration of previously engineered channel control and the situation that we firmly believe has been caused by a lack of proper planning by state and local governments. Back to jet boats, does Shady Cove have a problem with mini jet boats? Well, of course they don't. In Exhibit C, you'll hear in their meeting, they didn't have a problem. And Nick Fitzpatrick, EMT and fireman, who commented in your July twenty-fourth board meeting, the head of the jet boat rescue program in Shady Cove, someone who trains jet boat operation for the Marine Board and someone who's on Shady Cove's water the most says, nothing there. Law enforcement says, not a problem. But apparently it's so bad, the city of Shady Cove needs to write a letter to the governor for it. It's a prolific problem, according to the Mayor Ball quoted in the Rogue Valley Times. Mayor Ball says he witnessed multiple mini jet boats crash on rocks, two. And yet, the mayor witnessed it, there's no video, there's no photo. Did he call nine one one? He just witnessed an accident. No, no record of that. The mayor just stated he witnessed an accident. So were the people okay? Do their boats need to get pulled off the rocks? Was there alcohol involved? Was everything okay? Well, we'll never know. Kind of just like everything else the mayor's involved in. I'm not a fan of mini jet boats, but that's just my opinion. And we're allowed to have opinions. But judging the whole based on a few isn't the way we should conduct ourselves. We believe no changes to current laws should take place, not even for one second. If someone is a safe and courteous river user, I believe they should be allowed to recreate. If you decide to do dumb things, there's penalty and I believe it needs to be a very large one. And I need to, I believe that we need to actually look at some extra tools that will allow law enforcement to ensure that that can happen. So I'm going to give you an example right now of something that I feel is a blatant offense and something that maybe new laws for our marine division would help. A guy in a mini jet boat, and this is not in our discussion area, it's just a mile and a half below it. A guy in a mini jet boat launches off of Nugget Falls just out of Gold Hill, fifteen feet off the falls into complete aerated boiling water below, which is not buoyant. They take video of it, everybody's cheering. I believe the operator of that vessel should receive a large, large fine and termination from the waterway. And I believe the termination from the waterway is a big factor. This operator, in my opinion, caused a reckless endangerment condition. He put onlookers in harm's way. In the event that anybody had to rescue him, they are now in harm's way. And that's reckless endangerment. And you're speaking to somebody who knows about it. We performed six separate swiftwater rescues this summer and six other non-threatening rescues. Every one of the swiftwater rescues we were involved in, my wife and I were involved with one of them, was a potential harm for us or our employees. Not everyone's perfect on the waterways and accidents happen all the time. Point in case, there are dozens of rafting accidents every year that happen around the town of Shady Cove. And on average, one death a year. That user activity will keep claiming lives year after year, but that activity will not be targeted for elimination. I feel our law enforcement needs additional tools, laws to help them enforce this type of behavior. A removal from a waterway, in my opinion, should be an option for law enforcement. I'll talk about safety. So our video recordings on Exhibit A will clearly indicate very light river use in comparison to other areas. A very happy and safe river community and services carried out in a very professional manner. At the Oregon State Marine Board meeting dated July twenty-fourth, you heard from one of the largest rafting outfitters we have in southern Oregon. They've been around now for more than fifty years. Bart, owner of Noah's, clearly stated, there have been no issues regarding jet boats. This coming from somebody that is interacting with those every day, professional river user doing so. Jet boat propulsion is by far the most safe, maneuverable form of powerboating we have in this country. And anybody saying otherwise is simply not educated. Most all jet boats have immediate reverse response, unlike prop propulsion. A jet boat can parallel park, traveling thirty miles an hour and do it in a distance of twenty feet. And to my point, it's the exact reason jet boats are used extensively by law enforcement and a very large volume of the boats Oregon State Marine Board purchases for our state agency. I'd like to reiterate to you, there is no jet boat problem. Shady Cove's letter to the governor was illegitimate and it was based on non-factual information only. They didn't caught, caught lying, caught misinforming, and before I'm done, caught colluding. And that's just a fact. So before we leave here today, I want to address an issue I feel very important in your decision-making process. And many would say that I probably shouldn't do this, but I feel obligated to. We heard from Mr. Dan Van Dyk today. Unit fish biologist with Oregon Fish and Wildlife. We see his comments and recommendations in the paper. I've even had the privilege of reading a direct letter he sent to the Southern Oregon unit manager of Oregon State Parks. There has been multiple instances where Mr. Van Dyk has targeted powerboats. He's been an ongoing volunteer for the Rogue Fly Fishers. And in Exhibit M, you'll find a formal complaint I issued against Mr. Van Dyk. It is my opinion, he's used his position to interrupt and influence business associates that happen to be partners of mine and they happen to be state agencies. In our absolute humble opinion, any recommendation given by Mr. Van Dyk that has any modification for the river user group jet boats is isolating out the least impactful per study. User groups per his own educate, own agency findings, and that is just simply unacceptable. If there is a recommendation for change, it would be contradicting the agency's findings. If changes are to take place, I would think it needs to address the most impactful user groups or groups or all groups together. Which seemingly there hasn't been, nor will there be. We firmly submit to the board that no changes are to be made on the upper Rogue River. It's just not justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak? All right, John. Remember with it, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions. How long have you been in business?
I think we entered our fifteenth year. This year, is that right? Fourteen?
We started in twenty eleven, so it's been thirteen.
The operation is made by the same, you're doing the same thing that you did fifteen years ago?
Yeah, I mean, no, not really. I mean, we 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 developed a river park down below Tubel and that's been a very good highlight. Tubel State Park doesn't highlight any of the area's history and culture, and so we just decided to do it ourselves. So that's a stopping point for people.
How many boats you operate?
Three. Our largest boat is three feet longer and six inches wider than the largest fishing guide jet boat on that stretch.
How big are they?
Uh, there's a twenty-five foot, twenty-eight foot and a twenty-one.
How many passengers?
Ten, eighteen and twenty-five.
You say you operate on a ten-mile stretch of river. What what's a ten-mile stretch?
That section of river between the old Gold Ray Dam site and Rattlesnake Rapids.
So you see any changes that you can make to that route? Could you reduce it? Could you change it somehow and still be in business?
Um, I believe the answer to that would be yes. But I don't think that it is fair for the river users that want to experience a section of river they don't normally ever get to do or can achieve. Additionally, there is a lot of historical locations above Tubel Bridge, the Lefton massacre, Teddy Roosevelt's stop off, Ginger Rogers' Clark Gable Retreat, some other stuff. I mean, it's, you know, it's to us, it's just not functional.
So you see your boat ride just more than just a deadline trail? So you see your boat ride just more than just a deadline trail?
Well, it's not a, well, it, it's making memories, you know, through activities. Of course, spinning the boat is thrilling for people. But outside of that, our average speed is twenty-two, twenty to twenty-two miles an hour. This is not a speedboat ride. This is a river tool.
Now, if you speak about other powerboat activity on the river, potentially causing more damage to the river than you are, you see a lot of propeller boats on the river?
Oh, almost every drift boat that we encounter has an outboard motor on it with a prop.
I'm not talking about drift boats, I'm talking about other.
Other jet boats?
Other powerboats.
Yeah, there's many, many other powerboats on the river. Above Twoville Bridge, there's a place called Truvie. And the reason it's called Truvie is because that was one of the first jet boat manufacturers that ever started, and I think that was about seventy years ago. It has a long, strong history of power boating in that area.
Can I interrupt just one second? So, I, I'm trying, maybe paraphrasing your question. So we have small outboards on drift boats. We have boats that are powered by jets. Are there boats that are powered, that are not necessarily drift boats, but boats that are powered by larger outboard?
No, not props. It would be a jet pump on the end of an outboard motor though.
Okay, thank you. Member one, go ahead.
Forget where I was going.
Do you have any more?
I, I personally, this summer, we saw two mini jet boats. That's how many mini jet boats we saw. And keep in mind, between Josephine County and Jackson County, there are how many jet boats registered or mini jet boats registered? Under fifty. That's just.
Mini jet boats is a big problem.
Very rare. No, it's just, it's just not. There, it's, it's nonexistent.
So why would mini jets be attracted to a section of the river? How many mini jet boats trying to?
I don't, I don't think they are. I think they're attracted to areas where they can, you know. That's a hard question for me because that, that's why I really don't, uh, I'm not a fan. I'm, I'm not a fan of the user. I don't even know the word. It, it's what they are perceived to be. And I don't believe that all mini jet boat drivers are that way. But it just seems like they're thrill seekers, they want to capture things on video, they want to post. And that's a certain percentage. I thought many years ago, that a mini jet boat should be considered a personal watercraft. I even talked to our local law enforcement about it. And they told me that it really couldn't happen because the definition of a personal watercraft like a jet ski had to do with straddling something. Had to do with, with sitting on top of or something like that. So the law wouldn't allow it. But I do think that the board should consider categorizing them or at least, I mean, if you, if you, if you made them a personal watercraft right now somehow, well, they wouldn't be allowed above Goldrey Dam anyway because personal watercraft's on.
You speak about exhibits, are, are we getting copies?
You are. They're all electronic and I'm all, and so all of our videos are electronic. And then I have one hard drive specifically just for the exhibits that I talked about today that you will receive. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Actually, we have a couple more questions.
Yeah, I'm just curious. You heard Mr. Van Dyke's recommendations from ODFNW for the seasonal restrictions below Table Rock Road. What?
Steve, I'm sorry, can you remind me what that was?
I believe you're gonna have to go off my recollection of it. I believe it was a seasonal, a lot.
Ten minutes you said to Labor Day.
Allowing jet boats from May fifteenth to Labor Day. I believe. I'm trying. I believe that's what it was, was allowing jet boats to be able to operate below Table Rock Road, Fishers Ferry, May fifteenth to Labor Day.
First.
Oh, May first, Labor Day?
I'm curious what that would do for your business opportunity. How would that impact?
About half of our business because of the river tour activity. You know, our river tours go above Twoville Bridge. Yeah.
Yeah, but.
But I don't know if that was a recommendate, did he really recommend that there was no jet boat use above Twoville Bridge? I thought it was Rattlesnake Rapids above.
It was Rattlesnake. It was Rattlesnake.
Yeah, and in that instance, it wouldn't affect us at all.
Okay, my, my mistake. That was a few presentations ago.
The seasonal period wouldn't affect you.
No, the season is our season. His window is exactly what are, we already do and obvious, for obvious reasons, right? If you're steward in the environment, you're gonna not be, and jet boating is self-regulating. You obviously need water to jet boat. So I've always looked at it as a self-regulating thing.
So, one more time, just for me, since I started this mess. The, the recommendations below Rattlesnake Rapids that came from ODFNW, you're saying would not affect the business at all?
No, but I, but at the same time, if that's limiting all jet boat use, I, it completely contradicts his agency's findings. And I completely disagree with, with anything like that. Because there, there is no studies there. If you guys were, if somebody sat in front of you and, and laid it all out and, you know, there are studies and all that kind of stuff, I guarantee you, jet boats would be no different than an outboard motor on a drift boat raking the bottom of the river or oars or waiting anglers. And that's just a fact.
Understood. I was just trying to get the impact to your business.
Thank you.
So, building on a couple of the questions that these gentlemen have asked. Great new, great information about the size of your boats, number of castings, just saying. About how many trips during your season do you run?
On average, we'll do about three hundred trips above Twoville Bridge. And about six hundred and fifty below Twoville Bridge.
And kind of building on a question that member Lambert just asked. So, there was talk about this window of operation from sometime in May to Labor Day for all jet activity. Do the personal jet boat owners, fishing guides that use them, et cetera, do they go beyond those, that season?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I guarantee you, these homeowners that are above Twoville Bridge, prior to nineteen ninety-five, there were six to eight jet boats up there fishing salmon and go and buy their house at five-thirty in the morning.
Um, I think that covers my questions. Any other questions on the board? Thank you so much for coming out today.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you're doing.
And we have a forty-five minute break, starting in two minutes for, for our lunch. We have two more presentations coming back, starting at twelve fifteen from City of Shady Cove and Jackson County. So we'll see you back here at twelve fifteen.
Okay, we're no longer muted and I'm gonna take a slide here.
Okay, good afternoon folks. We're gonna get back to our last two presentations. For those who are asking the sign up sheets to speak will be put out at one o'clock and they're gonna be out in the hallway or in the back of the room.
Bill, do you want them in the hallway or right there?
Okay, so the sign up sheets will be in the hallway. Bill will be running that and we'll put them out at one o'clock. So our next speakers are from the city of Shady Cove. We have two people present and one virtual. You can introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
My name is John Ball. I am the incoming mayor of Shady Cove. This is...
I'm Michelle Perry. I'm the city administrator for Shady Cove.
And I'm Kathy Nichols. I'm the council president. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you Kathy. Last two or three years, the introduction of jet boats on the Shady Cove section of the Upper Rogue River has created an escalating user conflict and is now threatening the city's state mandate repairing efforts, our economy, our way of life, and also the safety of our visitors and residents. In response, early last year, the city wrote a letter to Governor Kotek explaining the situation and asking for help. She agreed, probably not just because of us, but a lot of different people hitting up on her. She agreed, called together the affected ADTs, and she launched public outreach process through Oregon Kitchen Table, which either myself or one of the counselors participated in every single meeting they had. And so here we are, we enter the process looking for a common sense solution. We hope the Marine Board agrees, and that is everyone's goal, common sense. Solution with some common sense. From the beginning, the river section in question has been referred to as the Upper Rogue River. And the problem is simply being defined as jet boats. I know people have been asking for more clarification and things like that, that's a good point. The Northern Upper Rogue is really two separate sections, much like Lee Valen Hansen said this morning in his introduction from OSB. There really are two different sections there. And the topography, the activities that exist in both those sections are overlapping and combined but different. The Northern Upper Rogue, which is very large, non-motorized boating, has a very large, non-motorized boating rafting community thrives, which up until recently had no jet boat interference. The southern part of the Rogue in that area, in which jet boat tour company operates, overlaps many of our same concerns, again is different and it's separated. These two segments with their unique typography and history have overlapping but different jet boats issues and therefore must be considered separately. Our concern is only with the upper north Rogue, though our concerns and sympathies are with our neighbors to the south. In that section of river, the recreational norm for decades has been floating and drifting. Today, no jet boat tours operate in this section of the river for a very good reason. Per an email sent to our Shady Cove ex-mayor from Taylor Grimes, the owner of Rogue Jet Boat Adventures, I quote, "Please let your constituents know that in no way would we ever even consider Shady Cove as a viable option for boat tours. The amount of bedrock present in that area, as well as raft traffic, are just two of the reasons, out of many, why this would never be considered." On this, Shady Cove as a city and Rogue Jet Boat Adventures are aligned. Specifically, typography and the high concentration of non-motorized boaters make the northern part of the Upper Rogue section of the river unsuitable for jet boats or any other motorized vessels. But despite these obvious facts, the state Marine Board has factually demanded that more data is needed. Well, to this, we are hoping to provide that data. I'm gonna turn it over to Council President Nichols, right ahead.
Okay, alright, slide three please. So the Upper Rogue River is a serene, narrow, boulder-strewn channel of swift water with many twists and turns. And for recreational floaters, it's kind of like a wild water park. You go to the top, you drop in, and the current will guide you through exciting class one and two rapids until you decide to exit at one of the many boat ramps in or near Shady Cove. It's fun, it's relatively safe, because everyone is floating in the same direction, one way. Floating and drifting are the established norms on the North Upper Rogue, and jet boats are unquestionably the new kid on the block. For as long as drift boats have been around, they have been floating the Upper Rogue, North Upper Rogue, to take advantage of the world-class fishing opportunities that the area provides. And drift boats today maintain a solid presence on the North Upper Rogue year round. And these boats, they're piloted by residents, visitors to the area, as well as countless fishing guides, many of which, according to, I think it was the Medford Oregon Kitchen Table session, they have migrated up to the Shady Cove area or other rivers to avoid jet boat conflict and churned up river bottoms. Per the Oregon Fishing Guide, there are 12 registered companies that provide fishing guides for the North Upper Rogue. Shady Cove has two brick-and-mortar companies that offer fishing guides, and then there are countless independent guides that a quick Google search will reveal. For rafting, we have five rafting companies that contribute to our economy through business licensing and a per-raft tax. And these companies have a longstanding history, the oldest of which started 42 years ago. Commercial jet boats do not operate on this section of the river for the reasons cited by Taylor Grimes of Rogue Jet Boat Adventures. Specifically, the bedrock and the raft traffic are prohibitive to jet boat tours. For the section of the river, jet skis are banned, so that use has already been taken off. And lastly, many jet boats have virtually no established traditional use on the north Upper Rogue. They have been visibly absent until just a few years ago. So the point I'm trying to make here is that floating and drifting are the undisputable traditional uses of the north Upper Rogue. Moving to slide four. So what traffic patterns do all these residents, visitors, and companies create? Well, as I said previously, the city of Shady Cove imposes a raft tax for each commercial raft that floats the north Upper Rogue. And the statistical numbers shown on this slide are based on this tax, as well as observable estimates from area experts. So during a summer week, the north Upper Rogue River conservatively sees about 300 commercial rafts, up to 350 drift boats, 100 private rafts and kayaks, not to mention a large number of anglers in the shallow area. And this conservatively totals 750 non-motorized boats, each on the river for about four hours. And up until a couple of years ago, the area has seen almost no high-speed jet boats. Slide five please. So let's turn to safety and conflict. Until recently, Shady Cove has had little to no river conflict issues. Then in comes the recreational mini jet boats, and with it came complaints of noise, bank erosion, and safety. The county and many others have discounted many of these complaints, identified by the Oregon Kitchen Table as baseless or emotion space. The city of Shady Cove disagrees. Starting with safety, common sense dictates that when you have 750 non-motorized boats, many piloted by amateurs, and drifting through narrow rocky channels, having a high-speed boat coming upstream is an accident waiting to happen. And in August, such an accident did happen when a tour boat collided with a private jet boat on a narrow section of the Rogue River in Josephine County, resulting in injuries. Okay, now this accident did not happen here, but, so does it mean it's discounted? No. When the 20 mile an hour speed limit was mandated for all school zones, did that mean that a child was injured at each? Of course not. History and science dictate that what happens in one area is likely to happen in another area of similar makeup and condition. But unlike the accident that happened on the north Upper Rogue, one of those parties will most likely be a raft or drift boat. And unlike jet boats, non-motorized boats are not agile in the water. The outcome will be dictated solely by the jet boat, which makes this even more of a risk. Not to harp on the Rogue Jet Boat Adventures letters, but they too agree when they say that they would never consider Shady Cove as a viable option for boat tours because of bedrock and the raft traffic. They get it. And today, he even said that a percentage of the mini jet boats are thrill seekers and that perhaps mini jet boats should be categorized as personal watercraft. I think the city could get behind that, because those are already gone. In other words, rafts and these jet boats don't mix. Slide six please. Regarding patrol of the Upper Rogue River, Jackson County Commissioner Roberts, in a live interview, claimed that patrol of the river is routinely done. We disagree. In the 12 years I've lived there, I've seen a marine patrol boat on this stretch of the river only a handful of times, and usually as part of agency training exercises. So no, safety on the north Upper Rogue is not guaranteed by routine marine patrol. However, that's not to say that this should be used as a reason to not create a restriction. Quite the opposite. Rules will be followed by the majority of the people with or without marine patrol. For the few rule breakers, the new rule will empower citizens and the city of Shady Cove to demand enforcement action and penalties. And lastly, we hear repeatedly that there are little or no reports of incidents. In fact, the county mentioned this at their September 17th commissioners meeting, and I think the Marine Board did as well as at their last board meeting. And we find this very disturbing, because we know that many of our citizens did place 911 or dispatch calls, which we now learned are, might not be logged, to report reckless jet boats this summer. And once, the caller was told that a sheriff would be there soon. The caller waited on the boat ramp for over an hour, and no one ever showed up. So the incidents are there. It appears that the accounting process is flawed. Slide seven please. For riparian, critics claim that the riparian destruction by jet boats has not been proved. And this is not true. Earlier presentation gave some great data. And I was able to dig up, per the Scientific and Technical Advisory Committee, which pulled in research from eight researchers, including the Army Corps of Engineers and the Australian Maritime College. They say boat wakes have been shown to have erosive effects on shorelines, scour the bottom of the shoreface, and temporarily decrease water clarity. You can read the entire summary here, but it concludes with, "Even small recreational vessels within 150 meters of the shoreline are capable of producing wakes that can cause shoreline erosion and increase turbidity." Now, we know that jet boats undisputably create excessive waves and rooster tail sprays as they zig and zag up the river. And the city of Shady Cove has a state mandated obligation to protect its riverbanks. And unless jet boat restrictions are imposed, the city cannot carry out its duties. Slide eight. Economy. As stated previously, our economy is intertwined with rafting and fishing. Jet boats threaten this dynamic. But for the city to prove this, it would mean that we would have to let the jet boat population grow, which it will, given the advancements in technology and the population, and then show a decline to our economy. Sorry, but this is really unfair and would be disastrous to our struggling city. Instead, I would hope that we could use sound logic and basic economic principles to say that boats and the rafts don't mix. This section of the river is advertised by our rafting companies as family-friendly, no rafting experience needed. What family would consider a rafting adventure, knowing that a high-speed jet boat coming the opposite direction is a real possibility? I would guess very few. And in support, the Eagle Point and Upper Rogue Chamber of Commerce recently wrote a letter to all parties, I think the Marine Board got a copy, fully endorsing Shady Cove's concerns and stance. They too agree that jet boats will threaten our economy. Slide nine. Turning to Oregon law, we hear repeatedly that keeping waterways multi-use for all is the way to go. But does that mean that everyone has the right to do whatever they want on these waterways? The state of Oregon says no. Throughout the state, various restrictions have been placed on numerous waterways. And in fact, in OAR 250.20, there are 66 separate sections, each with numerous subsections, that identify special rules for specific waterways. And here are just a few of them. Jet pump drives are prohibited on at least seven rivers', reservoirs, or parts of those. Personal watercraft are banned on most of the Rogue River. Slow, no-wake speed is mandatory on the Rogue River upstream of Peyton Bridge. And one rule even reserves a portion of the Rogue River near Grants Pass for racing motorboat testing. So when our county commissioners and the jet boat community assert that no restrictions should ever be placed on the Rogue River, because it is a designated state highway open to all, they are absolutely wrong. Restrictions already are in place for specific portions. When the habitat, the traditional use, and safety on a specific river section are compromised, and when the topography dictates risks for excessive speeds, restrictions are absolutely necessary. So thanks, and I turn it back over to Mayor Ball.
Thank you, Councilor. So what is the solution for the northern upper part of the Rogue River? During the July quarterly Oregon State Marine Board meeting, most board members wanted no change to the Upper Rogue usage unless the data warranted it. I believe a lot of data was just given right there. Shady Cove agrees with the multi-use waterway goals of the Oregon State Marine Board. However, multi-use does not necessarily imply use without bounds. When the rights of a minority threaten the rights of the vast majority, it is time for regulation. Oregon State law supports this. For OAR 830.175.195, the state Marine Board may regulate and restrict boating activities to protect traditional boating uses and prevent user conflicts. Two, the state Marine Board, we make special regulations consistent with safety and the proper rights in any waters within the territorial limits of a political subdivision of the state, which is the city of Shady Cove is. Three, the city of Shady Cove may apply to the board for special regulations relating to the operation of boats on the waters within the territorial limits of the political subdivision. That's also a possibility. For the last 20 minutes, the city of Shady Cove has provided data, data, and I believe more data. The jet boat company itself has stated that the bedrock and raft traffic make the north Upper Rogue unsuitable for jet boat tours, and therefore by extension, high-speed jet boats and other motorized vessels. Slide. Trying to paraphrase a little bit here so we can get through and run it along. Therefore, our letter to the governor involved agencies in accordance with Oregon law. Per the data presented here today and further justified by the written statement of Rogue River Jet Boats Adventures, Shady Cove poses the following. State Marine Board limit, eliminate the threat of high speeds on the Upper Rogue northern segment, either through a 15 mile an hour, a 15 horsepower engine maximum, or a speed limit of some sort. We do believe the speed limit would be hard to enforce. At a minimum, Shady Cove will argue for a restriction within the city limits. And though Shady Cove has no basis of jurisdiction outside of its boundaries, the city likewise would request the same restriction to impose north of Shady Cove to the dam at Lost Creek, where most of the rafting, floating fishing trips begin, and there's spawning beds for salmon and steelhead about. Jet boats are already entrenched lower on the southern part of the Shady Cove. This is not Shady Cove's concern. Preventing harm to our residents, visitors, riparian areas, and economy, however, are absolutely our concern and duty as elected officials. Keeping voting speeds low on the Upper Rogue River from Shady Cove north is necessary for Shady Cove to fulfill this duty. During the July quarterly OSB meeting, most board members voiced preference for no change to the Upper Rogue, unless the data warranted. The city of Shady Cove has provided that data. The sad part is, will we be hurt? We entered this process not knowing where to go, and we turned to the governor of the state of Oregon. Rafts and boats have little maneuverability in tight areas and swift currents. We are asking for a common sense approach and help by the Oregon State Marine Board to lead us down this path. So, in closing, the sad part is that the data that has been readily available, floating and drafting and drifting are the traditional uses of the northern Upper Rogue, this is undisputable. Rafts and boats have little maneuverability in tight, this is also undisputed. Jet boats need speed to travel through shallow waters, this is undisputable. Rogue Jet Boat Adventures says, "Shady Cove, the area is not suitable for jet boats and bedrock and raft track." The same conditions affect personal jet boats as well. Northern River is fragile ecosystem and numerous slides show how boats, including jet boats, negatively affect this. I think we've heard about a lot of that over and over today. Moving on. So I guess our last question is, so wide end with all the indisputable facts, have any of the Marine Board members publicly announced that they are hesitant to impose any restrictions until data is presented? It's like the Marine Board isn't even trying. I'm sorry, but it seems like you are content to let the Upper Rogue be trashed, the Shady Cove economy destroyed, and speaking of data, this is a two-way street, something that has been bugging me for quite a while, and somebody mentioned it earlier today. Floating has down the traditional use of the Upper Rogue River, which by law should be protected. Many jet boats are the new technology. Before you introduce a new technology or use into an established floating section of the river, isn't it incumbent upon the Marine Board to provide data that the traditional use and the fragile habitat will not be threatened? I don't know. Where is the data coming from? During the Marine Board's October 21st meeting of 2021, OSB member Larry Warren stated that the board should not just use complaints as an indicator for change. He is right. Complaints lead to reactive actions. When the outcome of a situation is statistically and scientifically provable, the Marine Board has the obligation to act in proactive manner. That's what we're asking. Thank you for the opportunity to present. We trust that what we have shared today succeeds in getting you to rethink your current no-change stance. But before we leave, our city administrator would like to quick second.
So as stated at the beginning of this presentation, Shady Cove entered this process hoping and expecting a fair and common sense-based outcome. We still hope that this can happen, but we feel it necessary to share some concerns. On, sat on September 13th, 2024, Commissioner Roberts speaks on the Bill Meyer Show discussing the county's official position on the jet boat issue. Roberts says, "Our support for multi-use for everybody. If they can take one use off, then they can take off any use." Does it start with this one, or for what reason? What haven't we seen that by that way, we can take use off? Meyer's reply, "Because there's a real agenda-based process playing out in the background that really doesn't want anyone on the Rogue River." Roberts replied, "Well, we know that stretch of river, they want it preserved. It's all part of a plan. I agree. And in the future, we need to fight to keep it open for all, for public use to all." Both interject, because first, they came for the jet boats, and next, they will come for the kayakers, and next, they will come for the people driving on the river and fly fishers. We can't have that. And, don't touch a rock. It's how they take over. For a county that represents all residents, this dialogue, sold as the county's official position, is very concerning. Based on the above, we cannot help but wonder if there is indeed a conflict of interest. We surely hope that there is, this is not the case, and we trust that the Marine Board can attest to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Whithey, do you have any questions?
No, sure don't.
Member Lambert?
So I heard you guys talk a lot in that presentation about mini jets. And I heard regular jet boats one time, that presentation. The whole focus of your slide, growth in mini jets. I'm gonna ask you the same question that I asked folks earlier, trying to tease out all of that information that gets specific. Is mini jets and the growth of mini jets on the river through Shady Cove the issue?
Yes, for our city.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
Go on. I was gonna say that for our city, it's the mini jet boats that are the issue. We do have the emergency services use jet boats. I believe I have seen another bigger-sized jet boat that's always very... He has been respectful, but it's the mini jet boats, or anyone who can bring a boat on and go up the river. the river at high speed. That's what we are again. So even though, yes, it is the mini jet boats now, if a bigger jet boat still feels, well, I have the right to do it and can fly up the river at thirty miles an hour. Yeah, that's going to cause problems for the same reasons that we discussed here today. So for us, it's high speed on that section of the river.
And I just want to add to that. So I've been in the area full time about eight years, fished the area for ten or twelve. Up until three or four years ago, you never even saw a jet up in our, the jet boats were already running down below, they were running all the way down into the canyon. But we didn't see them up there. Then all of a sudden you saw one, and you saw two, and you saw three or four. And then they're more and more regular all the time. And our hope is that the Marine Board can get in front of this before it overtakes us. To be quite honest, it's going to continue to grow. Technology is going to grow. The boats are going to get faster, they're going to get shallower, they're going to get less expensive. And then there's going to be more and more of them. And the damage is going to be, how would you say, is going to be devastating to our economy, to our way of life.
I hear you, Mayor. I guess what I'm trying to tease out is what we're witnessing happen, what's happening and what we think will happen. That's where I'm trying to draw the line in my mind for decision-making process.
We can say we've seen it.
We are.
It gets worse, it's going to be even worse.
We are witnessing mini jet boats taking complete advantage of the north upper Rogue. But we see that any jet boat is capable of the same behavior and we are adamant of protecting our gigantic, non-motorized community, our economy is built on it, lives, lots of souls are coming down this river in boats that are very hard to control, that can't just get out of the way. So are large jet boats not causing the problem today? Yes, that is true. But if they were there doing the same thing as the mini jet boats, they'd cause just as much damage, if not more. Now, we haven't talked about the jet tour boats because we feel that the current jet boat tour operator is saying, uh-uh, he would never consider operating. And we would hope that others would do that. So by just saying jet boats in general, no horsepower above fifteen, that takes care of everybody. So Steve, just because it's not happening today, for goodness sake, if it can happen with one boat type, it will happen with all the jet. It can happen with all the jet boat types.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for coming out today. And our last presenter is from Jackson County, Commissioner Roberts.
Good afternoon, the notorious evil Commissioner Roberts. And I want to welcome Director Warren, Chair Jackson and board members of the Marine Board and welcome to Jackson County. I appreciate you coming here in person to hear from everyone's taking the whole day, to hear all perspectives, a transparent process for real public testimony, one person, one testimony, ensuring all voices are heard. But I have good news for probably you and me both. I don't have a PowerPoint and I won't take half an hour. The Rogue River, as you can tell from the previous presenters, and will no doubt as we hear from everyone else who has come, is a passionate issue. Those of us who live in the Rogue Valley, visit the Rogue Valley, live on the river, recreate on the river, have businesses here, fish, boat, swim, Tahiti, float, just to name a few, and yes, jet boat, all share, enjoy and benefit from the beautiful Rogue River. We all, without a doubt, impact the river to some degree. We even have a water treatment plant near Tewell Park. All human activities create impacts. The Upper Rogue River is an economic driver in southern Oregon. It brings tourists to the region for river-based activities and is a major contributor to businesses relocating to the region, along with commercial as well as residential development. The river drives tourism being multiple commercial uses such as rafting, guided fishing trips and jet boat tours. This arrangement allows for businesses to prosper in Shady Cove, in the Upper Rogue and in our county as a whole, while serving as an important role of providing for and encouraging outdoor recreation. The impacts to decision that may affect any of these uses must be weighed heavily and must be based on sound data, not speculation, special interests nor consensus. Our board believes that the current uses with all of those impacts can coexist successfully and can coexist flawlessly. And yes, I have toured this stretch of the river with our Jackson County Sheriff's Division who patrol the river, and I'm pleased and confident with their patrol services they deliver on the river. And I just heard that I was quoted that this sheriff's patrol is routinely done and I would never quote the sheriff's schedule because I don't know the schedule, I don't make the schedule. I do know I was in the Shady Cove meeting when they were planning the letter to the governor and they asked me to speak and all they were talking about safety issues. And all I just said is you might check with the sheriff's department about safety issues. They are the ones who patrol that and they could give you some good insight. And that was my only input in that. Our board has two major points for this Oregon State Marine Board. One, ensuring all voices are heard. We advocated for such a meeting as this and again, thank you for this opportunity for our residents of Jackson County and beyond to be heard individually, reducing the dominance by special interest groups. And second, the importance of the ruled law that state agencies must consider, the public use doctrine put forth by the Oregon Supreme Court, which prevents the state from alienating or otherwise encumbering the rights, the public's right to use state-owned waterways so as to materially affect or impede those public rights of navigation, commerce, recreation and fisheries. The Oregon case law is an amazing powerful tool to protect the multi-use current provisions of our Rogue River and not allow special interest ban or adversely affect a particular use. Because as the administrator of Shady Cove accurately quoted me off the radio, when you can ban one use, you can ban another and you can ban another and you can ban another. And eventually you do have a wild and scenic river not to be touched or enjoyed for anything or by anybody. And it is my personal concern that should never happen. And I'm sorry to tell you, that is a goal by a few and I have a document stating just that of those few wanting to have a wild and scenic river is their goal. The public use doctrine protects this from happening and the Oregon State Marine Board is the guard and the door. And banning uses is a slippery slope that nips away at the public's use of all public by the ways and public lands. And we've seen it in action in many, in many other ways. I just want to thank you again for being here to listen and for the opportunity to hear from the presenters this morning and for all the, for the opportunity to all, for all who've come and to hear their testimony this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Yeah, I have a question. Do the commissioners have a position on either limiting the horsepower or the speed on the river?
We had just a basic encouragement for the multi-use, leaving, I guess, the discretion to the Oregon State Marine Board in looking at the data and what you felt was a safety for investments.
Do you have a particular position? Thank you.
Member Lambert? Great, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
So we have concluded with our, can I ask one question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, since we're a little bit ahead of schedule, is it possible, since we do have Jackson County Sheriff's Office Marine Patrol here, to have them answer some questions? But no, just curious.
I think. The question is, since there are Jackson County Marine Unit folks in the audience, would it be a possibility to have them come and answer a few questions?
So Member Lambert, I think it would be better for the board to give staff the questions that you have after this meeting and we'll work with the sheriff and get those, any responses to you before the meeting on October one thirty.
So as long as we have it before the twenty third, I'm good with that.
Thank you. So thank you to all who came out and did be part of the panel discussion today. I know I learned a whole lot and I really appreciate y'all taking the time. We're going to come back at one thirty with our public testimony portion. At this point, the public comment portion of the meeting that starts at one thirty will be on a separate link. This is for people who are participating virtually. So we will be disconnecting from this currently meeting and joining the other link after the break, which will be, we're going to start at one twenty-five because we've got a couple of housekeeping things to take care of before we actually start taking testimony. And if anybody's watching online who's signed up to testify virtually, we will be starting with your testimony. So we'll see y'all back here at one twenty-five.
Don't test the fun on the wall because it's completely wrong.